Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We're going to go ahead and regarding the items that were discussed during closed session, we are going to report out after we reconvene as we are going to be heading back into closed session after open session later today. So, or later tonight, I should say. So, we're going to go ahead and begin with our Indigenous land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land currently occupied by Washington Unified School District as the traditional home of the Patwin people. The sovereign people have been caretakers of this area since time in Montreal. Despite centuries of genocide and occupation, the Patwin people continue as vibrant and resilient federally recognized and unrecognized tribes, bands, and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Patwin tribal neighbors for their contribution as the caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence. With their blessing and continued guidance, Washington Unified School District seeks to provide an accessible, equitable, and supportive institution of learning and experience. Right? And now, our pledge of allegiance. Can we please have Anselmo Marine lead us?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, the British Empire.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and have roll call. Vice President Pazadi.
Here.
Sir Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
Trustee Wong.
Here.
Trustee Benegas.
Present.
And I too am present.
Our school board member.
And our student. She's awesome. Excellent. Okay, and so now, approval of the agenda? Yeah, because announcement of the actions, of action taken in closed session, we will be announcing that when we do return back from closed session. Now, approval of the agenda?
I move.
Second.
All right, moved by Trustee Wong, seconded by Trustee Benegas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, we are on to communications and celebrations, a celebration of the Washington Unified School District Middle School band performance at Ainsworth.
Good evening, President Coffey, Vice President Pazadi, trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, and Cabinet. The Washington Unified School District Middle School Bands performed together on March 27th at the Riverbank Gym. Tonight, we're excited to share with you a video celebrating highlights of the band performances. The message of the district-wide middle school band performance was music for good measure, and it was standing-room-only event at the River City, or the Riverbank Gym. And then Mario is going to queue up that video. Skip that end.
Yes. Oh, I didn't even see that. Oh, wrong one. Oh, my God. How's everybody doing today? We're doing great here. Let me just make sure that I have the right. All right.
We've had several board celebrations where we bring our high school band, and it's wonderful to see our, the best feeder program that we have in our district as we're looking to improve our elective offerings. But a huge shout-out to Dolores Bennett and Maja for the Elkhorn, Riverbank, Westmore, Southport, Stonegate, Bridgeway bands. Thank you for letting us share tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, recognition of River City High School Skills USA Award recipient Siddiq Alavai.
Good evening, board members and everyone present. On behalf of the Engineering and Science Academy, I want to thank the board for approving our overnight field trip at Ontario-Los Angeles to attend the Skills USA competitive events. Thank you so much. Today with me, I have the winners of the region and the state competition. My Region Four Electronics Technology winners are Gold Medalist Shreeta Chand, Silver Medalist Liliana Ramirez, and Bronze Medalist Callian Solis. To top it all off, when we went to the Skills USA California, we won the gold this year, and that is Liliana Ramirez. Just a quick, brief overview. It was a three-day testing process. Day one was they had to take two online tests. One was the Skills USA Knowledge Test, and the other one was the Electronics Technical College Test, which was really hard. Even when they came out and said we had these questions, I'm like, damn, that was hard. So, day two and day three was the hands-on part of the competition and the math test. So, it was a four-step process. First, they did an Ohmslot test where they had to do a reverse calculations to find the resistance values in a complicated series-parallel circuit. Number two, they had to breadboard a circuit and then troubleshoot the circuit built upon the changes the judges did last minute. Three, they had to then complete an equipment failure report. And four, after they had built all these components, they had to solder them on the PC board and it should have worked. So, talk about stress level and anxiety. To add to all that, they had to do all that in three hours. Okay, so that was, there were seven different high schools who participated, about 25 medalists from different regions in California. So, all the gold, silver, bronze medalists from every region in California came, and our raider, Liliana Ramirez, won the gold. So, she has a few words for you guys.
First, I would like to say, on behalf of myself and my peers, we are extremely grateful to be given this opportunity to perform at a state-level competition. It was truly an unforgettable experience participating in real-world scenarios, and it's helped us prepare for life beyond high school. This is things we would see in college and in the workforce if we chose to pursue this degree. Of course, this wouldn't have been possible without our time in the Engineering Academy in Miss Alavi's class. Since sophomore year, we all have been in our, we were able to build these solid relationships with each other, which truly helped us, especially when we were studying over spring break. Oh, my gosh, I wouldn't have won first place without studying with them. And then, our success also came from the tough love our teacher gives us. She is a little hard on us, but it's all from her heart. Personally, I would like to say that this experience has helped me with my college decisions as I will be going into Chico State in the fall for electronic engineering. I used to be like scared of feeling like, oh, I don't want to do this, like what if I'm not good enough? But this kind of proved to me that I can overcome any challenge that I'm faced with, and I have great optimism about my future within the next four years.
If it's all right with you, we'd like to come up or down and take a picture with you because you guys swept the medals, right? Silver, gold, bronze. I mean, why not? Let's do this.
with the Skills USA students and Siddiq's class as well. That River City High School is actually absent from that statewide competition for the last four years, so this was the first time they've actually been back in four years, and they received all of those achievements. So, I think that's worthy of mentioning and very impressive.
And all female, yes.
All right, so now, we're recognizing the Washington Unified School District's important dates and observance of April and May. Your notes.
Good evening, trustees. As the title of this presentation indicates, it's pretty self-explanatory. We like to bring to the board and to our audience each month on a regular basis important dates of recognition or observances that either the board has set aside or recognized through the resolutions process, or there are significant dates on our school calendar that are worthy of recognizing. So, on the next slide, we will focus and highlight on the month of, well, before we do that, we will talk about our alignment to the strategic plan as we always do. We'll make it quick, though, just to focus on the school climate, the culture that we try to establish here in Washington Unified, all the various achievements, the days of recognition, the observances, everything has to do with the people that are in Washington Unified. On the next slide, please. For the month of April, it's a little unique in the sense that we like to bring these almost at the start of the month, but April is one of those unique months where we only have one school board meeting. It happens to be at the end of the month, so many of these have actually passed, but some of these were this week. Everything from School Library Month, National Child Abuse Prevention Month, Assistant Principals' Week, Dolores Huerta Day, National Librarian Day, Administrative Professionals' Weekend Day, which was this week, School Bus Drivers' Day. Many of these celebrations, like I said, celebrate the individuals within our community. The month of April also coincides with the selection process for our district's Employees of the Year, which were just celebrated last week as well. Superintendent was able to visit all of the school sites where these employees work on a daily basis. We were able to celebrate that online on our social media platforms, and we're planning on asking several of those individuals to come to the next board meeting in May to be celebrated in front of you as well in a live audience. On the next slide, we're going to look ahead into the month of May. Again, several celebrations, several have to do with the month-long. In terms of individuals, again, within our community, this is typically a time of the year when it's a heavy celebration time for the people that make things work, including our teachers, our WSTA staff, our CSCA staff. We have also Principals' Lunch Hero Day, and I thought there was one other one. There is also a National Teacher Appreciation Day as well, but we like to highlight within the school district everything that has to do with on the California celebrations that are approved through the State Department of Education. And it's also School Nurses' Day as well. So, that's just a glimpse ahead into May. And then, after that, it brings us to the end of the school year, which I know is a celebration for many, many folks in the community. But we're going to try to bring some of these actual individuals here in the live audience at the end of May, and we have some other celebrations lined up that month as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, time for our association reports. We're going to go ahead and start with our Student Board Member Report. Julia from River City.
Yes. Hello. Okay. I'm Julia Shams from River City High School, and this is my Student Board Member Report. First, I want to start off with the Bridgway Bs. Their B run was a huge success, and they want to thank all of the families who helped them exceed their goal. After the, the after-school Lego club has also been a hit at Bridgway, and students meet weekly with Ms. Bulling to build STEM skills using Lego Spike Kits. Congratulations to their very own Ms. Lisa Brown, who was named Employee of the Year in the category of Health and Student Services. While they have always known she is the very best health aide, it is wonderful to see all her hard work recognized and celebrated. The Elkhorn Tigers want to congratulate Elkhorn's Anselmo Marine for Secondary Teacher of the Year and Irene Vera for Volunteer of the Year. Their Mesa students did great at the state competition, and 7th grade avid students took a trip to Fresno State. The Southport Ducks congratulate Donna Nielsen for being recognized as WUSD's Support Staff of the Year, and Donna goes above and beyond as their social worker to ensure that their ducks are taken care of. They also had a great time at their STEAM night on Tuesday, and they're looking forward to their annual color run on Friday, April 26th, which is tomorrow, and they want to thank their amazing community for supporting them. The Stonegate Lions want to mention that Missoula Children's Theater Company put on a fabulous production of Robin Hood for their Stonegate community, and this amazing production was put together in five days of after-school auditions and rehearsals, so a lot of work from their students. They want to thank Jo and JJ from the Missoula Children's Theater Company for making this such a special event, and they also want to thank their PTO Stacy Gro, Mrs. Arnold, Mrs. Black, and Mrs. Nyberg, and Mrs. Reyna for taking time to help with the play and allowing the students and families such an engaging and enriching experience. The Westmore Oaks Dragons want to congratulate WMO's Student Leadership Class for presenting to the students in the PBIS stations. They also are happy to have early academic opportunity programs for their 7th and 8th graders who visited UC Davis on Thursday, and they also had two field trips on April 22nd. The 7th graders' avid class went to SAC State, and the 4th graders went to the old SAC Railroad The Westfield Wildcats kicked off their CASP testing, or their CASP assembly, and it was a slimy one for their Principal Ramirez and Assistant Principal Avilar. They also want to congratulate their campus aide, Ms. Patty Arrozura, sorry if I mispronounced that, for being recognized as WUSD's Security Service Employee of the Year. Washington Unified Virtual Academy wants to report that today was their in-person day, and they look forward to their second STEM day on Tuesday, May 21st. Their 3rd through 8th grade students would be coming to campus four days over the next two weeks for CASP testing, and their enrollment has continued to increase at UVA, and they currently have 82 students. The Evergreen Opportunity wants to highlight that their students went on a field trip last month, and everyone had a blast at Castle Peak Trailhead. They're also looking forward to the upcoming field trips in the future, and they want to thank all the mentors from Green Light Go Outside and their continuous support for the class. The Washington Adult School had their Student Recognition Day, and they recognize students for their best effort towards skills and improving their English language skills. The students in the High School Diploma Program also continue to work hard towards earning their credits and receive a high school diploma by the end of the year. Yolo High School has 18 students who have successfully signed up and completed the Home Run Internship Program application, and they're excited to be looking towards working this summer. They also want to congratulate the 20 seniors who have already met their graduation requirements, and students and staff are excited to looking forward towards their New Spirit Week starting on Monday, the 29th. River City High School wants to congratulate Mesa and Hosa on a job well done at their state conferences, and we also want to report that we're really enjoying the renovated Raider Cafe and Rice Center. I also want to highlight our leadership program's continuous effort to spread awareness on campus by throwing events in light of Sexual Soul Awareness Month this month as, as well as our efforts to uplift culture on the campus and our upcoming celebrations regarding Asian American Pacific Islander Month. So, stay tuned for that in May. Washington Middle College High School wants to mention that they visited UC Davis, San Francisco State, Chico State, and CSU East Bay, and also SAC State before Decision Day. They also went on a photo club field trip to the Train Museum in Old Sacramento and heard a touching story of perseverance and resilience from a family who immigrated to the US from Vietnam. They have their guest speaker and their smiling faces highlighted. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Now, if you would like to continue to stay here and participate as a board member, you are more than welcome to. However, if you feel that you have done your obligation and you no longer want to be here, we understand that as well. You're very welcome. Awesome, great. All right, so we're going to go ahead and go on to our next WSTA report. President Nepp.
Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, Cabinet, President Coffey, Vice President Pazadi, and trustees. I'm tickled to see Julia up there. I knew Julia when she was at Mile Preschool when she was teeny-tiny, and I'm so proud that she is the first that has stayed in a very long time, so thank you for participating in, in government. So, I want to start out by acknowledging Administrative Professionals' Week. I think we all agree, and WSTA definitely believes that administrative professionals are the backbones of our schools, and they hold our schools together. They're the face people see when they come in, and the hand that's waving goodbye when people leave at the end of the day. And I think we only have to go back a couple of years to 2021, 22, when they held schools together during the biggest crisis, national crisis of education in my lifetime. So, thank you, school professionals, for everything you do and all the hard work you do in the extra hours. I also wanted to shout out to Anselmo Marine. He is the Secondary Teacher of the Year for WUSD. I would like to point out that two years ago, WSTA acknowledged Anselmo's work, so we were there first. I don't know if he's still here, but we are really, really proud. Also, a note to Dolores Hinson. Dolores is, if those of you who know music know that her work is nothing short of amazing. She's not here tonight, but if she were, I'd go give her a big hug because what she's done for generations of kids, introducing them to music and allowing them to explore that deserves celebration. She's retiring this year, so I think we need to all acknowledge her amazing work. her amazing work. I'm all positive at the beginning, don't worry, I'll save the rest for the end, but I wanted to celebrate the joint WSTA, CSJA, and HR presentation at the Leadership Series for aspiring leaders in the district. We were able to go and show aspiring leaders what our version of collaboration looks like and how we work together in an interest-based way, and we had a great time, probably too good. And I, from what I hear, and Farah can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was the highest rated of the entire series, so, and that's a testament to collaboration and effort together, so thank you, Farah, thank you, Daniel, who's not here, for your collaboration. I wanted to thank you. Last meeting, I made some comments regarding safety and communication, and, you know, obviously, we still have work to do, but I did want to thank WUSD because we have seen immediate changes throughout the district regarding securing our facilities. We have lock systems, buzz-in systems at all the sites as far as I know now. Our teachers have instructed on how to secure their classrooms, and we're having robust conversations about that. There was an incident that turned out to be a nothing burger, so I don't have to talk about it, but I do want to give the district a shout out for reaching out to Labor, because that was one of my complaints last time, and Labor was reached out to, and we were informed, and so, thank you for hearing. We really appreciate that. WSTA applied for and received a grant to go and visit sites in the district and meet with teachers and listen. Basically, we're interested in finding out what our members need to maintain their career as professionals in education, and we do this every few years, and we're having really great conversations, but I want to tell you, this is a different conversation than we've ever had before. Because our teachers know what they need, but they're not so confident, given what's happening with health insurance, skyrocketing costs, COLAs going away, when gas prices are going up, they're not so sure that we can keep them. And I know you guys have heard this, I have heard from a lot of them, I'm looking, I'm looking. I don't even know what I'm going to do because this is my life, and this is what I've chosen to do, but I have kids to raise, I have a family to take care of, I'm thinking about their college, and I don't know that I can maintain this and look out for my family. That's what we're hearing this year. And I know you know this because you know what's going on too. Our school board, our cabinet knows that it's becoming harder and harder, and we're doing it in the face of bigger and bigger challenges in education with how we're able to make sure that we support all students in SPED services and with enrollment issues and all of these sorts of things. That being said, we know WUSD's commitment to maintaining the highest quality in education and recruiting and retaining the best professionals that we can have, and we have an opportunity this year because we are in contract negotiations, and we can take a step forward and make sure that we do our best on that. And what does that mean? WSTA is not asking to break the bank. We're asking for consideration that since 2021, WUSD has received over 15% new ongoing funds, and since that time, we haven't negotiated. So no one's to blame, we haven't been in the bargaining process, but we know that that money came, and we haven't been a part of receiving a share of that to help us keep our teachers and recruit new teachers. We have to look at things like, how do we keep SPED teachers? They have a special certificate, they work hard, they do the work sometimes in a really challenging environment, and they do that work without comparables with local districts. And so I think we really need to specifically look at SPED as well. I want us to consider that this is a year of opportunity for us because we know what the budget looks like moving forward. We know what the COLAs look like. There was a revision today about a COLA moving forward. So we have to work with what we have, and I invite the board to give direction to the bargaining team in the district to settle with our reasonable proposal that we have offered, and so we can move on with business. I also want to make sure that it is very clear, there's a calendar, a calendar is on the agenda tonight, and I don't want to take up your time later by coming up during that part, I just want to tell you right now, that WSTA supports both calendars, and those calendars were designed with student equity in mind. They were designed to think about how we can keep kids at school, and how we can honor kids who can't be in school at certain times of the year, how we can make a balanced schedule for our high school students, and how we can continue to look at making sure our schedule is equitable for all students, not just students that celebrate Judeo-Christian holidays. So we're hoping we can continue to have these conversations when we look at schedules later. What we did this year doesn't solve that problem, but it is expanding the school year a little bit so that we can start to look at equity for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for our CSJA report.
Good evening, President Coffey, trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, Cabinet, staff, CSJA members, the public. Thank you for allowing me this time. Our report tonight builds on a call to action that I have spoken about previously and will continue. We need to collaborate effectively, focus on getting things accomplished, like President Nep said, improving retention, wages, benefits, safety, et cetera. Also, we need to be transparent as possible with the public and staff. In that transparency, I want to share that we, CSJA, are being told by the district that we're moving into a time of uncertainty for the fiscal outlook of WUSD. As many of you know, the possible move to Riverpoint Drive for the district office employees is on the table. You talked about it tonight. This proposed move comes in part as a response to deplorable conditions that our members had been working in for years, mostly in the front building, that is now condemned. As you know, the district has mitigated the majority of issues, and employees have been relocated throughout existing structures onsite into rooms that have been deemed safe. At least, that's what we're being told. Having said that, many of you on the board, hopefully all of you, requested to hear from actual staff who would be relocated, their current opinions and what options are available for them to choose. With the help of one of our amazing CSJA long-term district office employee and a current administrator, a survey was conducted and distributed. The results hopefully have been shared with the board, so please share this information with the public, use it in your consideration for any move, change, or lease agreement. For transparency, this information should be shared. The financial impacts of a proposed move should be shared as well. I know that there are five options that I can think of that were on the survey. Option number one, stay at 930 Westacre. Option two, relocate to 750 Riverpoint near IKEA. That's a $90,000 a month option. Option number three, relocate to another WUSD-owned site. Option number four, find another property with lower rent in West Sacramento. Option number five, work remotely while our current facility, 930 Westacre, could be demoed or could be upgraded. It's a property we already own. Once the data is shared publicly, we need to consider that this move, if it happens to Riverpoint, will look different for different staff, depending on classification and management status. You may want to move really bad if you're being promised a private office. Secondly, we're very appreciative for the CBO's Budget Study Session that was done for both unions at the same time last Wednesday. Some of the data, including how many full-time classified employees, were not accurate, but we have been given updated calculations. Thank you, Monique. What also has been included is the 4.25% automatic annual increases for the superintendent and the CBO, which were not included in the original calculations for management salaries. It's been updated. We were also told about ESAR funds, COVID, one-time money, being used to pay some salaries in this district. An interesting fact is that there are no directors that are being paid using these one-time monies. So they have no deadlines, because the 34 positions have deadlines with those one-time money or grants. Why is this so important to be transparent about? Because during the Budget Study Session, we were told these positions would be brought into the general fund or recouped to be able to continue. We must remember that words matter. Saying things like, "We'll need to find a way to reabsorb them" into the general fund is very concerning. It should be, for you, as it is for us. On tonight's agenda, the Instructional Calendar presentation is an information item. You'll hear it shortly. The language on the presentation says, "Meet CSJA and WSTA contractual requirements." As stated before, last board meeting, President Gondaro said CSJA is in support of the instructional calendars, but we want to make it super clear, we reserve and demand the right to meet, confer, and bargain the impacts that this earlier start date will have. There will be impacts. We have already asked to meet, and HR just sent us an invite. Thank you, Farah. For next week, so we're starting now, which is really important. Lastly, we have given our Article 18 salary proposal to the district, just so everyone is, again, being transparent. It goes both ways. Transparency goes both ways. Approving raises for management and claiming to have serious projected financial hardships in the near future in the same school year is difficult for us to understand, quite frankly. So, we have asked for not more than what the two WUSD district leaders will be receiving automatically in their contracts over the next three years. Each contract annual 4.25 amounts to 12.75%. To be clear, that 12.75, what you guaranteed them, states language like, "They shall also receive increases experienced by other management groups," like a Me Too clause. That means, so whatever percentage they will get, we get, then they get on top of that over the next three years. Think about that. Whatever we get in the next three years, they will be 12.75 above us. Those of us working in the elements, maintaining and caring for our campuses, those of us feeding our students, supporting our students directly, keeping our students safe, those cleaning and sanitizing daily after our students, those driving our students to school every day and home, will earn 12.75 less in salaries than the top officials in our district, no matter what we agree on in negotiations. The gap is widening, and it's not going to go away, unless we work together. In closing, money is also being spent in this district on keynote professional speakers. One, to the tune of $75,000. Private coaches for district leaders, $60,000. High-end consultants, a possible lease for an office space for $90,000 a month. Out-of-state conferences for $200,000, all of which have been funded or have a variety of funding sources. Tonight, and every board night moving forward, you have an opportunity to invest in the humans who are employed in this district. Many have dedicated their lives to the district, many live in our community, many who you expect to be equitable and fair in their treatment of students and other staff. It's time someone is equitable to us. The money is already being spent, as evident in this agenda. Choose to support, retain, and value us as well. This doesn't have to be adversarial. We can come together and accomplish many things if fairness, transparency, and a shared commitment to one another exist. Our growth depends on the growth of this district. We want to congratulate all the Employees of the Year, classified and certificated. You are all my heroes.
Thank you very much for that. All right, we are going to go ahead and move to public comments. I would like to say that there was a disclaimer that was read earlier, so I will not be reading it now. As a result, I believe we have several public comments. Mario?
Yes, we have received a total of nine general public comments, so you can clarify if we're going to do the 20 minutes, or if we're going to do two minutes, or three minutes, or... Okay. Our first speaker is Anselmo Marine. Oh, he's not here.
Good evening. I am Cindy Oseguera, but I'll be speaking on behalf of Anselmo Marine and his comment. Good evening. My name is Anselmo Marine, and I have been a teacher at Washington Unified for the last 16 years. I'm here to share with you about the inequity occurring in one of our schools. Tonight, the school board will receive information about the school district's recent decision to make Elkhorn Village a full dual-emergent school over the next decade. No matter what decision the school board takes at its next meeting, I ask you to instruct the school district to address the inequity facing English-only students at Elkhorn. For any school board members that have yet to visit Elkhorn or are unfamiliar with the dual-emergent program, A, please stop by, you're invited. B, each grade level has two dual-emergent schools and one English-only class. The dual-emergent classes in K3 are at 20 to 23, Kinder specifically is at 26 students, but have the flexibility to provide students further academic or behavioral support with the second class. This is not the same for the English-only students. By the time students reach 4th and 5th grade, dual-emergent classes are anywhere from 15 to 19 students, while English-only classes are maxed out at 32 or more. English-only students face inequity because they do not have the small class sizes or available teacher support as dual-emergent students. English-only teachers have been maxed out and tapped out. As a middle school teacher, I was recently asked what this matters to me. It matters because it's an inequity that is going to persist. The school district has known about this inequity since day one, 2023 and before. The school district's solution is the plan to make Elkhorn a full dual-emergent school and each year face out one English-only class. If the board approves this plan, the district has no solution for grade levels and teachers that will take two to six years before the dual-emergent reaches their grade level. If the board does not approve this plan, the inequity remains. It matters to me because students are students. It should matter to Washington Unified because their promise is equity, excellence, empowerment for every student, every day. How exactly is Washington Unified living up to this promise for English-only students at Elkhorn now and in the future? Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment request is from Rebecca Ramon.
Hello, everyone. I would like to start off by saying that I'm speaking for myself. I was also sent the survey last week, which encouraged me to come here. I had no idea there was going to be so many people here, by the way. So I am coming to talk about a very private matter, so I'm going to ask everyone here to please be very compassionate, and I might get emotional. My name is Rebecca. The last time I was here at the podium, I was very pregnant. Now I- Now I have a lovely three-month-year-old. And since I've returned to work, I've been faced with a lot of new things. And I'm just here to talk about that. First of all, I want to say I am very blessed to have this job and the support from so many people here. But I want to share my experience. Since I've been back, I have been trying my best to pump and manage that, because without that, my baby wouldn't eat. And I just want to share that I have been pumping in Room 20 with three other female colleagues in the room. There are no walls. Sometimes there's just like a corner. And I pumped for the first time a while back ago in a little closet in the back of HR, where they usually do like the typing test. It was really, really hot in there when I did. And it also smelled a little funky, so I did not find it appealing to go back. So I just thought to myself, like, I'll just pump in the room with three other females. And this can be difficult when my colleagues need the room. Directors have like master keys. I have a little sticky that says, "Pumping in progress." I know y'all have seen it. And I just wanted to share my experience. Sometimes I just have to deal with it, but there are other days where I just do feel like I need a little bit more privacy. I, again, am appreciative of the small HR room in the back. Sometimes I am a little embarrassed to kind of like walk through everyone, though, however. And again, it smelled really weird in there. And there are days where my pumping schedule... I'm getting so emotional. I'm so sorry, friends. Where my pumping schedule just isn't the same. Like, last night, my baby woke up like three times, and then I had to pump an hour earlier than what it is. You know what I mean? Moms, you know what I mean? Okay. Thank you. So I am, again, I really appreciate my job. And the warm water, lack of warm water. When washing bottles and stuff, it's really important to use hot water. And washing my pump parts, I've been struggling with that. So I'm just here to ask for change. There's a lot of moving, relocation, no relocation. Just some positive change and support would be amazing. Thank you.
Our next public comment request was Ruth Pagono.
Thank you again for the time. I'm actually reading a letter that Nanji sent me. She's sorry she couldn't be here. Dear Dr. Hildreth and WUSD Board of Trustees, As you know, CSEA is in negotiations with WUSD to update our contract. We have received a temporary increase in pay. That 4% increase is expiring in July. That's the off-schedule. And many classified employees are struggling to pay their bills due to inflation. Numerous classified work two jobs to support their families. Classified employees are feeling embittered due to what appears to be inequity in pay. I realize upper administration went to college to earn degrees, while most, some classified positions do not require certificates or college educations. We do work diligently and are dedicated employees. We are under the impression that upper administration receives automatic pay increase yearly to an already large salary. This does not seem fair. We ask that you provide pay increases and adjust our pay scale to accommodate the cost of living. Classified employees truly keep our schools safe, clean, and we provide supervision, nutrition, first aid, and education to our students. As negotiations move forward, I ask you to approve increases to our wages that are equitable.
Our next public comment request is Eileen Pfeifer.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Pfeifer, and this is my sixth year as a K5 resource teacher at Elkhorn Village and 12th year in the district. For the last six years, I've worked with wonderful, supportive colleagues at Elkhorn, and our sped team really works as a cohesive unit. I also deeply respect our district sped team, but feel like in many ways, their hands are tied. As many of my sped colleagues have left the district over the last few years, I have chosen to stay. So you might ask, why am I up here talking? I'm here because I'm exhausted. And not the end-of-the-year type of exhaustion, but the type of exhaustion that comes from being over caseload and servicing more students than is possible. I'm talking about the type of exhaustion where you are dealing with problematic behaviors on such a consistent basis you cannot teach your other students consistently. I expect to be tired in April and May. I know what those events generally bring, but this year, the push started at the end of September and has not stopped. Our team has been pushing on overload all year. I also know we're not alone, and other sped teams at all levels across our district have the same concerns. We need more help. We are not able to give our students the extra support they need when we have such high numbers. If no additional help comes before August, we will be in the same position we are now at Elkhorn, but with an entire school year ahead of us. To me, that is terrifying. We need help. We have too many students and not enough sped teachers. According to CDE guidelines, we should have caseloads of no more than 28 and service no more than 28. I currently sit with 28 students on my caseload after letting the sped department know I would not go over my caseload. However, because I was told there was no other option, I currently am teaching 35 students. Our students aren't getting the help they need. We also are supposed to be compensated if we do go over. I've heard or seen nothing. For me and many of my colleagues, it's not about the money, but the principle. The kids deserve better. We have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is Eden Perkins.
Good evening, school board members and ladies and gentlemen present today in the audience. My name is Eden Perkins. I'm a straight AP student. I'm a legacy partner for the BSU at my school and secretary and media manager for my major dance team, as well as a two-year link crew leader. As you all know, there has just been a Be the Change movement that has dropped throughout the district a little over a month ago, all because of the hate speech and racist behaviors towards different groups of people who attend our school. Before this campaign was dropped, I experienced racist things being said to me by my classmates. Unfortunately, this is just the reality of being a black girl in this country. But something said by an uneducated, insensitive student made me angry and caused me a great amount of pain and disappointment because of their ignorance. During AP US history, we were learning about the experiences and horrors that African-Americans faced during slavery. During class, a student said, and I quote, "Imagine slavery was like the draft, sports drafting, and slaves had to compete to see who could pick the most cotton the fastest, and that would determine who was bought first." That day, I cried to my dad, not because of how it affected me, but because of his ignorance and what my ancestors went through was not a joke. They were taken from their home and never asked for nor wanted a life of slavery. It was never their choice. That evening, I sought comfort not only from my parents, but from my friends and BSU advisors. They checked in on me and vowed to follow up with school administrators about their concern for me, as well as others, in writing and in person. This was not this student's first time making hateful racist remarks and jokes. Later in the week, he was removed from my class thanks to my advisors and friends taking action to speak up about this incident. As of right now, the BSU club that I am proudly a part of at River City has taken action to further this movement since not a lot has been done since it dropped a month ago. And enough isn't being done to protect students like myself and even teachers, administrators, and staff from hate speech. The BSU made a sign and created a campaign called "No Room for Hate." Many club members signed a letter of support and presented it to Principal Billingsley a week after my incident took place. Principal Billingsley fully supported our campaign, but asked that we include "Be the Change" on the sign. We happily agreed. So I came here today to talk to you about my experience and hopes for your hand in assisting and supporting us in a district-wide effort because there's no room for hate. Together, we can really make a difference for all the black, Asian, Mexican, Indian, Pacific Islander, Native American, LGBTQ+ and other students, admin, faculty, and staff to feel safe attending River City. This campaign also goes beyond the safety of these groups, but preventing another one of them to be added to the statistic of dropping out of school or ending up in jail and ruining their record forever because of a crime that could have been avoided with the simple assistance and support of the school district. I hope this message meant something to you. I hope you support an issue that needs attention because continuing to push it off for later will only push another student over the edge, falling into a negative life that could have been avoided. Thank you.
Our next public comment request is from Kailani Griffiths.
And the podium can go down, so if you... There's a button there. I didn't want to interrupt.
Sorry, a little short.
It's okay. Vertically challenged as well.
Good evening. My name is Kailani Griffiths, a sophomore at River City High School, treasurer of River City Black Student Union, also known as BSU, U.S. Senator for Black Student Union of California United, leadership student, member of the WUSD Superintendent Advisory Council, and an athlete on the wrestling and volleyball team. I'm here today to speak in front of you regarding BSU's recent campaign, "No Room for Hate." Recent events on campus encouraged my peers and I to start this campaign regarding the negative... Sorry. The negative impact hate speech has on individuals all over campus. Hearing hate speech targeted towards people of color, the LGBT, LGBTQ+ community, different religions, and different ethnic backgrounds has encouraged us to promote a campaign to stop hate speech on campus. We believe as students, we can encourage a stop to this and create a safer learning environment. We understand that hate speech has become more common, and we'd like to put an end to it in our community. With your support, in the near future, we would like to expand our campaign to all school campuses in the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment request is from Patrice Griffiths.
Thank you, Kailani, for lowering that. Good evening, WUSD school board and community members. My name is Patrice Griffiths, and I am the parent of a River City High School student, a co-advisor for the River City Black Student Union, Yolo Food Bank board member, as well as a den leader and chartered organization rep for West Sacramento Cub Scout PAC 49, which is the only Cub Scout PAC in West Sacramento. Through my work with the Black Student Union at River City, I've had the pleasure to support and connect these students on a multitude of platforms, such as they have tonight, to make positive impactful changes in our West Sacramento community. The campaign you have heard about this evening was created by the students as a result of speech that has been unfortunately spewed across their campus to not only students, but at times, staff and faculty. Additionally, while working with Cub Scouts in grades Kinder through 5th grade, I have also heard firsthand stories from some of our youngest students about being bullied due to a number of things, such as the color of their skin, ethnicity, religion, and other things that no child should have to be ridiculed about. As an active and engaged community member, I look forward to your support for this campaign as our students not only attempt to roll it out alongside Washington Unified School District as a whole, but eventually through the entire city of West Sacramento. I firmly believe that this is something that they can do. I firmly believe that you will support this campaign in conjunction and do know it comes from a place of care and love in these students, not just for them as the BSU, but for all students that they mentioned previously. I thank you for your time tonight. I thank you for all you do for our students, our staff, our teachers. And as a volunteer, thank you so much for your consistent support.
Thank you.
Our last general public comment request is from Stephen Weiss.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'll be ping-ponging around, so hopefully you can follow their unconnected points, but there's a lot on my mind, as there always is, which is sometimes kind of scary. First point, I don't know exactly how the school board process works, but I think there has to be a better way than keeping 80 of us or so waiting 45 minutes, getting an update, oh, another 15 minutes, another 15 minutes. I don't know. I just feel like there has to be a better way. I know some of it got tabled till later, but it just feels like maybe 45 minutes of waiting, it could have been tabled earlier. Just a thought. Different note, a quick bargaining update. President Nep mentioned it. So you all know me, of course, but for my staff members, coworkers, I'm the bargaining chair for the district. So when President Nep said we gave a fair, honest proposal, I truly believe that was the case, and I also believe that that was received that way. So I truly am optimistic that we can reach an agreement soon. That is where I'm currently at, and, you know, I'm really hopeful for that. Next part, unrelated as well. So recently, our school, Stonegate, went to Sly Park, and I was one of the chaperones that went there. I'll get to the point why a 7th-grade teacher is chaperoning a 6th-grade event, that there's reasons behind that, but I personally enjoyed it. So this is something I just want to commend the board for continuing to invest in that because the school we shared it with, their school is not from our district. Because if you go up there, if you're familiar, you often share the site with at least one other school. That other school is not in the district, and they had a fundraiser. So chances are, they came from a privileged school where only the privileged students in that district could go. So I just commend because it really is a blast, albeit thinly exhausting blast. In contrast, our school's experience, at least from the staff perspective, at Wonder Valley, not so great. What made Sly Park so effective was they had chaperones, adult chaperones. Wonder Valley, we had 14-year-olds. High schoolers were chaperoning our 8th graders. In some cases, our teachers were responsible for monitoring the behavior of the chaperones because they themselves were the ones getting into trouble. It was a nightmare for the staff. If Wonder Valley is going to happen again, that cannot happen. Look to the model that's working well at Sly Park and follow that. Do not do what was done this year at Wonder Valley. It was exhausting. That is also a four-hour drive from here. If there's an incident, let's hope parents will drive four hours to pick their child up. If not, someone is babysitting them on the side for four hours. Sly Park is an hour fifteen. It's doable. That being said, because that work is exhausting, I can speak for it from two nights at Sly Park. Is next bargaining cycle, I would like to bring up increasing the overnight stipend. There's, just throwing it out there now, it's only $80. You're on job about 24 hours of the day. You might get called in the middle of the night to take care of a sick kid. There was three sick kids. Someone threw up on himself. It happens. But that is not during the normal hours. That was at 10 o'clock. Other teachers stay up till 11 o'clock. Sometimes you get a call at 2:00 a.m. So I'm throwing it out there that overnight stipend for next year, I think, needs to be increased because that work is amazing but exhausting. I also have to sleep on a twin bed. That might be the worst, worst of all.
Thank you.
I do apologize. There was one comment that I... Ms. Carmen Wright, I apologize. Thank you for bringing it to my attention, and this is our general last public comment request.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Carmen Wright. I am a middle school math teacher at Elkhorn. I will be reading a letter from a member. Dear Superintendent Hildreth and WUSD Board Member, I am writing to bring to your attention a critical issue regarding the cost of health care in this district. I am a teacher who has worked in the district for 15 years. The increase of cost of health insurance has affected both my personal and professional life. Recently, my health insurance premium has increased. I pay $1,500 a month for a Kaiser Family Plan. The sudden increase in health care expenses has placed an immense financial strain on my family, causing considerable worry and uncertainty. As someone passionate about providing the best possible education to our students, this... financial burden waits heavily on me. It distracts me from focusing wholeheartedly on my role in the classroom, and forces me to consider leaving this district, which I've never thought I would do. Please take a moment and put yourself in my position and the position of so many others as they move forward with negotiation. Please think about how unvalued my paycheck makes me feel every month, to the point where I can't even look at the pay stub without making me ill or bring tears to my eyes. Thank you for your time. Patty Nguyen, surrogate. Thank you.
Okay, so now we are going to end one Sacramento Valley Charter School Annual Update presentation?
Good evening, trustees, staff, and community. I'm joined this evening by Dr. Amrik Singh, the principal of Sacramento Valley Charter School, who will be doing the annual update to the board per the agreement in place between their school and our district.
Good evening, President Coffey and Vice President Posardi, Trustee Vanegas, and Trustee Kirby Gonzalez, and Trustee Wong, Superintendent Dr. Hildreth, and CDO Ms. Tobel. So first of all, I would thank them for visiting our school and taking, spending time and seeing every corner of our school. And I want to introduce Dr. Serena Cervantes is supporting me now, she's our vice principal, and Mr. Arrow is our school full-time school counselor. And thank you for this opportunity to present our annual presentation. As our vision that our school community provides support for rigorous standard-based curriculum, and individualized support for all students, and safe and compassionate learning environment, and a highly professional certified staff. So we follow the mission, and it's our 13th year of existence, and thank you to Washington Unified School Board for authorizing us in 2011. And it's a continuous journey since then. Next slide, please. So our enrollment last year, so this is our demographic, English learner 105, and socioeconomic disadvantage 261, student with disabilities 15, and African-American 5, American Indian 1, Asian 281, Filipino 1, Hispanic 9, two or more races 1, Pacific Islander 4, and white 4. But in Asian, also, there is a huge diversity which is not actually noted. Next slide, please. I want to let the district know that this is our student population. We have from Antelope, poor student Dixon to Algro 37, and North Highland 1, Rancho Cordova 4, and from Sacramento 259, and West Sac 68, U.S. City 1. So that's our last year enrollment. Next slide. So we always trying to increase the diversity at our school, we making continuous efforts, and this year, our Asian and other population from 8% increased to 13% this year currently. So you see on the left, and on the right is this year, we are able to increase diversity in our district as we always try our best. So that's our dashboard indicators. So chronic absenteeism, suspension rate, English learner progress, English language arts and mathematics, and all the local indicators. Next slide, please. So our chronic absenteeism, I think all schools are facing, and so are we, we 18% increased, and 18% chronically absent increased 3.3%. So it's a comparison with the Washington and state. So we are trying to reduce the chronic absenteeism with special measures. And next slide, please. So suspension, suspension rate, 4% suspended at least one day, so it increased by 1.7%. Next slide. So we have a large number of ELS, English learners, and this is their, that they have been making good progress. So 65.2% made two steps or one step at least, and last year, this year, 73.9%. Next slide, please. So this is comparison, English learner, 76.8 making progress towards English language proficiency, increased 10.1%. So that's comparison with the state and WUSD. So English language arts, so we maintain 43.9 points above standards, maintain minus 0.6 points. And this year, I mean, English language arts, that's the state on this side, yes. Next slide, please. So math, 34.6 points above standards, increased 20.7 points. So, next slide, please. So ELA CAS growth, so it's state and Sacramento Valley Charter. So it's four years before pandemic and during the pandemic, two years during the pandemic. So 1819, so we had ELA 67.6, and 2021, 61.85. So this is when we were all, you know, virtual, and we chose to take CAS tests during that time also. So, and right after that, 67.9, and maintained almost same this year, I mean, last year too. Yeah, next slide, please. So math, before the pandemic, 62.5, and during, it dropped 48.5, and second year of pandemic, 53.46, came up a little bit, and last year, 65.24. Next slide. So this is our science, before the pandemic, 44%, and during, it dropped 38, and 42, and last year, 57.15. Next slide, please. So this is our growth comparison, 21, 2, and 3. So math and ELA. So it's a, we increased in math, almost maintained in ELA. Yes, next, please. So ELA Math Sumative Results, so on the right side, either they are above standards, met standards, or on the left, did not meet standards, or near standards. So, next slide, please. So areas of growth for SBCS, so community engagement to increase enrollment from diverse groups of students. We are trying NISH, and Facebook, school website, and we going to local community in West Sacramento too. So ELD teacher working on English learner assessments and evaluations, so by two staff members, hired a school counselor, Mr. Arrow, Joseph Arrow, and additional sport, instructional coaches for ELA and math in middle school, student engagement in seasonal sports such as volleyball, basketball, other after-school activities including robotics and dance for student enrichment. Hired mostly full-time instructional aide for student sport. SEL collaboration with Sacramento State University, focus on science standards from early grades. Next, please. So, so we, our school started participating outside also, so these were the contesting teams, Capital College, DeGrain, Clark's World Middle School, Riverview, Rio Vista, Capital College, White Lighthouse Charter. So, and our girls won the trophy by defeating Riverview Middle School in Rio Vista. Next, please. So this is our Holy Run, this is Spring Festival, and it celebrates the diversity of colors, and our students and the whole community love this event. It's a Holy Run. Next. So this is our staff for this year. Next, please. Yeah. Thank you, and questions, please.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments received.
All right. Does the board have any comments?
Thank you. I'm looking at your board member dynamic. Do you have any board members who are West Sacramento residents at the moment?
So there is one who has a business here on Houston Street.
Okay. And I think in the past, we've said that too, we can't dictate who you have on your board from here, but certainly encourage you to have representation of a community member in this community that you, how's your charter in. I would continue to encourage you to seek one of your families who lives here.
So we have one parent who has been parent for more than six years, so Daljit Guman, she's an attorney, so she's on the board for quite some time now.
Does she live in West Sacramento?
No, she lives in Algro.
Okay. So I would encourage you to consider, to work to increase, to have a board member who lives in.
Yeah, we try to recruit, and we will keep trying again.
Okay. Thank you. And then my question is, that you have very high scores for your test scores, and looking at your number of students who are socio-economically disadvantaged, looking at your number of students who are second language, and you outpace the state and you outpace our district in that regard, and I'm wondering if you can share with us, what do you think attributes that, given that you do have high chronic absenteeism, as well as some suspension rates? So why do you think that is? What is, what is working well at your school in terms of specifically that population? Secondly?
I would say one thing, I think is research-based, that all cases, currently in US, I think only 30 or less than 30% schools will teach one word language from early grades. So research has proved that it strengthens intellectual, emotional stability, and grown-ups can avoid Alzheimer and other Parkinson. So I would say we are teaching world language Punjabi, it's one of the Indo-European languages, and it has more than 16 sounds, which we don't have in English or Romans. So by learning, pronouncing, by doing this, mean it's not only help their speech, but their competency in, you know, cultural competency, and their confidence, and so, and teaching world language, we have an opportunity to teach not only language, we teach math in that class, we teach grammar in comparison to English and Punjabi. So I mean, all those contrasts and comparisons, I think are contributing, and I would say support from the parents, and plus, our staff is working hard all the time, and I think Dr. Cervantes can comment on this, because she.
I want to first say thank you for coming, that I'm coming back to Washington Unified School District. I was an ED teacher at Southport Elementary when I moved from Nebraska to here, and Patrick, I called him up personally and said, I need a job, and he gave me one. And then Diane Tope took me under her wing, and I was the principal during the summer program, and started the character education and Day of Respect with Krista Gobaldin and that. So I'm really happy to be back here in Washington Unified. I have to say that I've only been at Sacramento Valley Charter School for, since March 1st, but I've been in education for 30-some years, and this is a very safe, very nurturing, very peaceful, and very vigorous program in people and staff members. So if you ask me why that they are growing, it's because of the culture and the environment that they have, and we all know that if you have an environment and a culture that you can grow in, that you will academically succeed too.
Thank you. And I appreciate that response, and I think that because the data does not drill down and show this, and you spoke to being able to teach math and other subjects in Punjabi, would the majority of your EL students then who come to you, would that be their home language?
There are quite a diversity of languages, from Pashto to Persian, to Filipino, Russian, Chinese, Punjabi, Hindi, so Fijian, you know, there is a big diversity of those students that were coming. And, but for Punjabi, of course, the largest number is Punjabi, the second largest is Hindi, and so from Pakistan, Urdu, there are Pashto, Afghanistan, and many Fijians, and so we have Russian too this time, Chinese, Vietnamese, they are increasing all the time. And so, and we, one- And so, and we, one thing we make sure, zero tolerance for bullying. We don't, you know, ignore it, address right, right away. And, and our chronic absenteeism is because many of our students, they go on independent study. And for two weeks or three, they go back to India to their own country. So, so it is considered still absenteeism. And so that's why it's more. And so Dr. Hildreth has taken a whole tour of our school. And I think they might have observed something which is different there. So Dr. Hildreth, you can.
I have had the opportunity to tour. Thank you very much. And was pleased to see students engaged in learning.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you for all this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question?
So, thank you, doctor. I, I've been able to see you here for the last nine years since I've been on this board. And I've, I've pretty much hit the same questions over and over again. So this will probably not be any news to you. First of all, in your slide presentation, I didn't see anything about a demographic, demographic breakdown about your staff in terms of years of service at your site. Like what's the turnover like? You know, I, I realize that I think Lighthouse Charter just unionized or voted to unionize. Have you allowed your staff to do that? Or has there been a movement from your staff to do that at all? Those are just some of the, the questions that go ahead and answer about your staff.
Yeah, so we have never stopped them, number one. Number two, so we have nine years, ten years, committed teachers, those who have been working ever since then. Now many of them, five years, eight years, seven years. So, and since we, as we are growing, we are improving their wages, salary schedule. And so a new teacher, fresh from a college can start at sixty thousand. And so there's a minimum starting. And then we don't have STIRS, but for four percent for, for one K. So school is matching eight percent. So, and longevity and all those. And the board, just without any demand from anyone, but we have been, you know, working as we are growing. So it's going to them too.
Okay. To stay on that point, so you have a salary schedule for steps per year of, of education experience as well as per educational level attainment, right? You get a stipend for say your masters or your doctorate or whatever.
Yes.
Understand that? Okay. I hope that you in the future can provide that with us.
I will definitely. So this time just we followed the template and we just, yeah. So next time, definitely I will.
And then the last, last time you were here, I, I asked you, because of the diversity of your student population is pretty homogenous, right? Like it's over ninety percent Asian right now. That's been pretty much the same in the nine years.
Eighty seven.
Well, that's this year, but from what you showed us on the, on the slide presentation. That hasn't changed dramatically in the nine years that I've been here, right? So what are you doing in terms of advertising? What's your advertisements? How are you trying to draw in a, you know, a different population to make diversity in your, in your school?
We are approaching the local communities. And earlier, the Southport Magazine was in West Sac. We tried that too, but now they shut down. Now NISH actually is everyone going to NISH and, or they buy a house, anything, they go there and our school is there. And we Facebook, of course, we update regularly. And, and then we have not first come, first served. And, and we give preference to West Sac as our charter policy. So this West Sacramento parents have a priority. And so, and more and more coming now seeing our school rank. So, but I think because of the world language, so we have a similar, but in Asian, as they say, there's a huge diversity there too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And now for our Lighthouse Charter School annual update presentation. Autry Street.
Yes, and I'm now joined by Roxana Villa Senor, who is the interim.
Or regular.
Almost. Okay, so interim superintendent of Lighthouse Charter School.
So good evening. Good evening, President Coffey, Superintendent Hildreth, trustees and cabinet. With me tonight, I have Principal Kara Shane. She's also a parent of the Washington Middle College. Her sons with us every day after school. And the founding member of Lighthouse, Peter Stone, our CBO. And trustee and former Washington Unified employee, trustee Matt Wilkins. And so they're just here. And if I'm unable to answer questions, as I'm new to this position and to this organization and charter, I'm sure they'll be able to help. But I am happy to be back. And as a longtime educator, twenty four years in education, started as a math and science high school teacher, site district administrator of a hundred percent Title One school settings in the South Sacramento Oak Park Highlands and even West Sacramento at Westfield Village Elementary School. I'm so happy to be back and do the work. It was great to see Ms. Patty and Jaime, as I had the opportunity to work with them and also seeing a couple of the members here. So it's great to see the community still here. Just to go over, do I click or do you?
I just next slide.
Okay. So as part of our MOU, there's a number of articles that need to be addressed. And I attempted to complete them just in a linear fashion, but as I started reviewing the data, in the future, I tend to integrate the data with hitting these points. But we'll be interactive and have an opportunity to engage in this conversation in a more just interactive way at the end, should there be questions. So as next up is our financial review. And while you could read this piece here, there's a solid foundation, stable revenue and expenses. Concerns for over net impact of, from the first interim and the amount of negative four thousand dollars is just challenging us to review our spending, our spending habits. And we've already begun to take those practices and explore our practices to put systems in place and make sure that we stay in alignment. However, we do still have a, maintain a strong financial position as our net assets equate to one point four million, which is eighteen percent reserves, which exceeds the MOU by thirteen points. And just as the next slide, the overview, you can just see that as an organization, we're really tap, taking advantage of the opportunity to establish our LCAP and review our goals and mission and foundational beliefs. And again, just restoring a space for collaborative school community, pursuit of excellence, the opportunity to invest in quality staff and recruit for the quality and the benefit of our students. And then just really engaging and empowering our communities through a healthy community and partnership through relationships. And next you'll see a highlight of the three core values that are reflected, which is positive attitude, self reflection and collaboration, which we attempt to incorporate daily through various activities and professional development and interactions. Our signature programs next are through the project based learning, incorporating rigorous learning experiences and to watch students take ownership of their learning and integrate it through an interdisciplinary manner has been exciting to experience. And art and music. There's an art show coming up and we'll share dates for interested members to participate and experience that. And you'll see in the next slide, some examples of students engaging in learning through even our garden. We have a school, a box, a planner box for every student to, or every grade level to invest in, and they can select their themes. We've partnered with the Yolo County Master Gardeners who come and provide support and teach lessons associated with this activity for ongoing support, learning and exploration. Just for the sake of review, just the next slide is just going over our LCAP goals, which is pretty consistent in some regard to many schools, given our eight state priorities and the conditions for learning and the responsibilities we have to our school communities. So the rigorous curriculum, addressing equity gaps in learning and community involvement for students, families and establishing a strong sound foundation. Our educational programs in the next slide you'll see is a combination of our wonders, which allows for the designated integrated ELD, for EL supports. There's tiered two and three supports through the Sunday reading. The systematic instruction, which is SIPs, is also offered for interventions for EL student populations. And new to us is the iReady Math, which has demonstrated to be successful for students. And I can speak to those growth points shortly. But we also have used the iReady ELA diagnostics and math path, my path, my, I'm sorry, my path, which is consistent with what's used here in Washington Unified. So the consistency in the language and engagement in conversations, especially in student parent teacher conferences, has been successful and opportunistic for data driven conversations. Next, we have mental health. And of course, we have our MTSS approach for multi tiered systems of support for the social emotional learning opportunities. We've recently been invited to join the Yolo County Mental Health cohort roundtable by the Yolo County Office, the supervisors. We have a PBIS coordinator, which is in blue, Shirley Gibbons. We have our counselor, Deshaun White. And there you see a student who's being recognized for, through the PBIS awards. What was significant here is just days prior to this, we learned that he had his bike stolen. And so his reaction was caught and it was just, just symbolic of the impact that we can have through just opportunities to celebrate students and unknowingly impact their lives positively. Next slide, we have special education. We're being very intentional. As you know, this is very challenging work, just to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our most vulnerable populations. So through the collaboration of our John Ed and Special Ed teachers, through the tier one classroom management and reflection opportunities to do checklist and, and receive training through trainer of trainers and peer supports. And we also lean heavily into our SLPA. They offer a wide variety of collaborative opportunities, learnings, networks, trainings. And we are certain to take advantage of as many of those as we can. And as I'm learning and growing in this position and the relationship, just being committed to ongoing transparency and partnership for the benefit of our students and service to our students with disabilities. In the next few slides, you'll see a combination of data that's collected from our California State dashboard, as well as, which you'll see these squares from ed data. And ed data is a collection of data that's in partnership with CDE, EdSource and FICMAT. And for CDC, it's more of the longitudinal data that contributes to this. For EdSource, it's the analysis and explanation to complex problems and journals and such. And through, through the FICMAT, it's, you know, supporting CDE and the CalPads reporting for policymaking and decision making. So just for the, if, for anyone who's unfamiliar with the, the graphics. Here you can see our enrollment as of today or yesterday, when I calculated, it was four hundred and thirty six students that are enrolled. You can see in the unduplicated student populations, we have close to fifty five percent, which are reflected in throughout our community. And we have eleven point nine percent of English learners, but you could also see a breakdown and a disaggregation of the demographics reflected by the, just listed there in the enrollment, English learners, foster homeless, socioeconomically disadvantaged and students with disabilities, which are highlighted as they are definitely reflected and critically measured for accountability purposes. And the percentage of ethnic breakdowns, I will share later. It is consistent and relative to the percentage and the demographic breakdown for not just our site, but the community that we reside in, our county and the state, in essence. In the next slide, we have chronic absenteeism. So for chronic absenteeism, we are at a yellow. And through here, you can see through the ed data that coming out before COVID, it was thirty nine percent. Chronic absenteeism was not a factor, as was the case in many places. The challenges weren't so great. But as we left COVID, the numbers continued to escalate, returning to normal, what that meant began to be a challenge. And we're currently down, but still significant and much work to be done. So in this particular area, we're starting our home visits with our counselor and our site administrator. We have SARB meetings. We have calls home for positive behavior, encouraging the connection. We create intervention plans. We celebrate improved attendance. And we explore solutions with families and try to partner with carpool if that seems to be a challenge. And in the next slide, you'll see our suspension rates. Given the previous years, we've had minimal or zero. And then this last year, we had three. And so that was an increase in suspensions and all for violent behaviors associated to forty eight nine hundred A one or forty nine eight nine hundred, forty eight nine hundred A two. So that is definitely something that we're working on with our PBIS, our just progressive discipline matrix, our restorative justice practices, as I'll explain later, and leveraging our MTSS coordinator, our PBIS coordinator, as well as our counselor. In the next slides, you'll see our ELA comparison. While we have increased by eight point nine points, we still have room to grow. We were in a positive place from above grade level standard pre-COVID. Coming out of COVID, much work to be done. And we're leaning into standardized practices, collaboration, team planning, benchmark assessments. And what's, what's been great to learn is there are essential standards identified through the report card committee. And so identifying those essential standards can allow us to backwards map, identify what mastery is, an assessment calendar, our, our PD that will help create spaces for teachers to work together and develop and grow. What's not reflected here is our iReady scores. If we were to pull the iReady scores for students in the fall of this year, we had nineteen percent of our students that were mid or above grade level or early on grade level. And in the winter, it was thirty three percent for an increase of fourteen percent at grade level from the fall to the winter. For students that were below, two or three levels below grade level, we went from thirty eight percent to twenty five percent, reducing that group of student population and performance rate by thirteen percent. In the next slide, you'll see our ELA scores. And, I mean, our math scores. And here also much room for growth and opportunity, as we recognize throughout many districts in the state and with the new adoption and the review of curriculum that's been recently approved by the state. I'm sure collectively, there's going to be a lot of opportunities for professional development, resources and creative ways of learning and working together to support the needs of our students. And as a former high school and middle school math teacher, teaching number sense to seniors to get through high school graduation rates is a very, it's, it's really sad to see and experience. And just exploring what we can do now. And just exploring what we can do now and recognizing the critical aspect and the impact now to prepare them for those next phases, especially in high school, is a strong passion of mine. If we consider I-Ready scores, again, from the fall, we had from early grade level to mid to above, we had 12 stu, 12% of our students that were at that level for performance. And we grew and doubled, just over double. 26% of our students are either early on grade level or mid and above. And that was an increase of 14%. For students that were performing below grade level standards by two or three levels, in the fall, it was 47%. In the winter, it reduced to 31%, decreasing by 16%. So the leveraging and the use of data has been essential to our work. The reason I included the dashboard and wanted to really highlight, and I, in the next two slides, you'll see the English Language Learner. I recognize in the community, the West Sacramento community, and having been an educator in the community, at Westfield, it was 60% of our student population was English learners. And the struggles associated with LTAL status and not addressing the needs are critical, especially when you matriculate to the high school level, giving them a sincere opportunity to pursue a post-secondary academic career if they decide, or even just the choice to pursue whatever avenue they want, is critical to exit and reclassify. And so, in my opinion, diving into this was especially key because it gave me the interest to explore, what are we doing? What can we do better? And how do we establish parameters for continued reflection, monitoring, data collection, and such? So in the next slide, you'll see our English Language Performers. At the exceeding and meeting grade level standards, there's 24%. None of them are exceeding grade level standards. So that's an area of growth for us and a desired direction to improve, exploring our integrated designated strategies and having teachers participate in training, targeting these instructional practices. In our next slide, with math comparisons, you can see that there's a continued need to grow in this area. And as we know, with our math standards, as even they are now, and then the changing, the literacy component is huge. Even with the integrated math Level One, it's, it's formulaic, but as you progress and you get kids into the integrated math Levels Three, literacy continues to be a barrier. And we see students continuing to struggle. So I'm, I'm hopeful that the new standards, the new resources and creative thinking will help contribute, not just for us individually at Lighthouse, but as a collective throughout the state. Next slide. As it relates to the qualified staff and the staff that are here, we opened nine, nine years ago, 1516, and we've had fluctuations and changes in staff retention. In Year Six and Year Seven, that was a significant impact by COVID. And if we were to look at teacher retention, educator retention throughout the state, I'm sure numbers would be comparable, as we know even many administrators and superintendents throughout the state have taken, just explored other options. Last year, we began to unionize, and this year is the first year we've engaged in a CBA, a collective bargaining agreement. And now we're in negotiations to revisit some of the agreements and articles that have been put in place. But we're working together. I think listening to teachers and including them in the process is essential to moving forward, as they're the ones on the front line. And so we've gotten to a place where we recognize that we come from different places, and our experiences and perspectives may differ. But we also have come to a place where we have decided not to include CTA representatives nor our legal attorneys present for that collective conversation, that partnership, the growth. And it hasn't been easy, but it's been very respectful. It's been a learning opportunity. And in this short period of time, it's allowed me to get to know and connect and better understand perspectives to be responsive to teacher needs. And the next slide just speaks high, just high level about the enrollment practices. We have ongoing open enrollment for students and families that are interested. And we do communicate and share names of students that are coming and going for the continued partnership. We do, in the next slide, have priorities of, and this was established in the MOU and at the onset. And so there are opportunities and priorities for employees and board of directors, siblings, students that are particularly enrolled in Riverbank Elementary School, the Brodick-Bright area for families who typically would not be able to afford a private choice option. It's a free choice option for families to, to exercise their opportunity to seek different spaces, if that it is what they're looking for. And then the founding members, there's a limit to 2% that may participate. And, and we're pretty much open to all students. And, and the reflection of those that do participate, it's through the lens of diversity, choice, opportunities for families that are looking for different experiences, leveraging the signature programs through art, music, PBL, and parental involvement and community. And you can see in the next slide that we do have an equitable distribution of races and ethnicities that are reflected in our school, again, consistent with that throughout the county and the state. As for discipline and disenrollment, we do have, we have not had any expulsions. We do have office referral forms, which give us an opportunity to address behaviors in a restorative practice manner. And using tiered two and three supports, PBIS is revisited. And for any information regarding specific students that may be, you know, impacted by this process, the confidentiality is, you know, restricted to us, but the information is communicated to you through the MOU. The next slide has to do with disputes. And we do have a policy, it's available on our website, and at this point, we do not have any uniform complaints. In the next, we have our safety and handbooks. We established our safety committee and successfully met our criteria by the March first deadline. We, it gave us an opportunity to connect with our families. They have decided and initiated a desire to revisit our, our discipline matrix. And so in the fall, we'll start a community forum to explore the discipline matrix, the impact, the behaviors, and really giving voice and choice to our families to have impact on the culture and the community that we're establishing here in our school site. We do have our drop-off and pickup procedures, and then policies, of course, can be made available and found on our websites. And in the next, we've had, since the posting of this, we've already had our book fair this week, our Family Literacy Night, which was very successful. LCAP conversations and advisory meetings have been ongoing and very robust. We copied with the principles, new parent orientations. And coming up next week, we do have our signature PBL nights. And overall, we are continuing to explore ways to engage families through our expanded learning opportunities. So we have clubs, we have sports, community partnerships that join us through Fairy Tale Town, Yolo Masters, and Gardeners Dance, Computer Science, which is new. And we're piloting in our after-school robotics program to see what the interest is and to get, see who, which teachers and staff are interested. But it would be a great opportunity to prepare students to contribute to Washington Unified through the secondary levels, as demonstrated earlier tonight. And of course, the art and music, having the opportunity to contribute and grow. We will have music program throughout this summer ELOP, and I'm excited to see what that could produce as a result. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Does the board have any comments? Yes. Did you say? I'm like, somebody does.
In terms of their, their staff demography, right? Like, so what is, you know, your years of service? You know, in previous iterations of this, I think, Mr. Stone, you would know this because you've been here presenting before. I've asked for a breakdown of how, you know, how many years of service does each have, each staff have at your school site? Like, it's not just years of teaching experience, but it's at your particular site? Because I'm really wanting to know, how are you retaining staff? Right? Like, that's the real question. Like, a continuum of educational curriculum is, is important for the students. And, you know, making sure that the staff being retained is also very important. I didn't see a slide on that, and I hope that you would bring that forward, or at least send it forward to us. No, I don't think so.
So in my review of the historical presentations, that has not been provided, but I can definitely look into it. So just so I'm clear, is it the number of years per teacher cumulative, or the number of years that the teachers have been here?
At Lighthouse.
Okay.
Like, you know who the teachers are. That person has X number of years. You don't have to put their name. You can just put, like, three K5 teachers, one has five years, one two years, one has one year. So that's the type of, that's the type of information. I want to see, you know, whether or not there's a great deal of turnover, or not so much in, in the way of turnover. Secondarily, the, the, the charter and the union have agreed, or the charter and the teachers have agreed to unionize, or to a contract, right? Has that contract been fully established, or are they still establishing the very first contract?
The first contract was established last school year, the end June. And this is our first year with the contract. Given some observations and learnings and deeper studying into the contract, there was a desire to make some adjustments. And some of the typical things that come forward each year for negotiations that are of interest to teachers. So we are in negotiations to review the existing contract.
Yeah, I mean, I saw you have an 18% reserve, which is extraordinary, especially if you have a union that you're going to negotiate with. And I, I would assume that, you know, if, if the union is negotiating with you in, in good faith, and you in good faith with them, that that 18% reserve should come down some.
We also carry a bond covenant that exceeds the minimum criteria through this MOU. So we do.
Explain that.
So a bond covenant for the building of the property and the lease agreement, or the, the money that's owed back to the property, has to maintain a 1.1. And Peter, you're going to have to explain for me, because I'm learning this part of the work. And, and so we just have to have a greater amount of reserve in our funding source to meet the bond covenant, until we reach a certain threshold where we can consider refinancing and such. Now, that's just, that's not to, it's definitely different from public schools and charter and buying our own property. So it's been my learning as well. But everything that we've engaged relative to budget has been very transparent. And in no ways are we trying to maintain a reserve for personal gain, but simply to meet our MOU criteria and our bond covenants. And that's been communicated transparently with staff.
Okay, that's great. But the way it's presented to us, it effectively says your reserve, your reserve in the MOU is 5%. Apparently, there's some other language, bond covenant language. I don't know what that is, but you're presenting 18% as this is what you have. What else is that bond covenant percentage, covenant percentage that is now? Because there's other space here for other programs, for your classified staff and for your teacher raises, right? And, and salary increases, as well as administrative, right? I'm trying to figure that out.
Yeah. I think I'm going to have to defer to Peter, our CBO, but I just know that we are, 66% of our income and our cash is contributing towards staff salaries. And so.
66?
66, with benefits. So we are very mindful of how, I'm not sure what your.
The reason why I say that's very shocking is because at the CSBA conference, they say standard is around 75 to 80%. So 60, 66% seems extraordinarily low. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious as to how that, that number is, is there, right? I don't want, I don't want to feel like this is just a back and forth between us. There's only one last question I have, is, is that, could you walk me through your, your SLPA, you know? I've, I've, I've received some questions from some of my constituents that have students, had students at Lighthouse that have come back to the district as a result of not having received the services in their IP that they need from Lighthouse. So I'm wondering if you can address, have there been any issues that you've had with your SLPA? Is there any particular things that you'd like to address?
So we don't have issues with our SLPA. Our SLPA is very supportive and guides us through challenges. And of course, with special education, it's very litigious in terms of making sure that we provide the service to students. The IDAA is in place to ensure that. We do support and provide a report to Carlos Salvalo, should any reports, which is your director of special education, should, should there be any reports or complaints that are filed. So we're very transparent. And respectfully, we maintain a positive relationship because the reverse is true. And we want to maintain partnership for transparent and open conversation, continued support. And we understand that there are some families that may not feel completely satisfied in our space and, and make choices to return to the home school. But on the reverse, the reverse can also be true, but we maintain respect, regard, and communication with Washington Unified, because we know that sometimes we might miss the mark through communication. But as far as special education is concerned and service provided, we are committed to providing quality service to students. And do we have complaints from time to time? Yes. And we engage in those conversations. We receive and accept responsibility, and we report to Washington Unified for transparency.
Thank you.
I just have a, a question. Some of us were chatting. Maybe it'd just be helpful for, for us to understand your qualified staff slide, if you want to pull that up? Because we read it one way, others have read it, just clarifying, like, year one, two, three, and then the attrition rate, the 100%, 80%? Like, what does that mean?
The percentage of staff that stayed from one year to the next.
Okay, so when you have year nine, you have 13, that means you have 13 staff who were .
Correct.
Were there for nine years, right?
Not for, it's from one year to the next. It's not accumulation.
Okay. So, okay, say more.
So.
So year nine, 13 means?
So it's in comparison to year eight.
To year eight, okay. So, so 24 in year eight, 13 moved on?
Yes.
So that was, hence the 56% attrition rate?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. So this, these are years of service.
These are.
At Lighthouse.
These are year-to-year comparisons. These are not accumulation of staff that have been there since year one.
We are confused, sorry. You went from 24 staff members in year eight to 13 staff members in year nine? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Total staff, your staff cut in half?
Yes. I can say that from my understanding, and this is again, I'm new to the organization, it is my understanding that the union negotiations and the communication and conversations and the process contributed to some decisions to make changes. And so we are working to. Um, and so, uh, we are working to, I, this is just what's been communicated. There's been a culture, and it's like what was shared earlier. Culture is impactful to a community. And so, that is the commitment to, to work in partnership, to be open, to listen, and to increase that retention rate for the sake of the community and for this particular, um, the school community as a whole.
So, do you have vacancies right now? Is that why it's at 13? I'm just trying to understand.
So, 13 of, so, 24 staff stayed from the previous year.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So, we, let's say we have, I don't know, 35 staff.
Okay, I understand it now.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So, it's just counting those that stayed? I could disaggregate this data a little more. This is just always how it was presented, so I just tried to do a continuation. But I can definitely disaggregate it. I love numbers.
All right, we're good.
Okay, okay.
We need a, I think we are misunderstanding this chart.
Okay.
So, let's just have Roxanne, welcome back, by the way.
Thank you, thank you.
We need to have her explain what this is, because we're, we're all having theories. I'm like, no, let's just have Roxanne explain what this is.
Yeah.
Okay, and I only have two, um, questions.
Okay.
Aside from the show. Um, so, I appreciated seeing, um, I think you changed from the last time. I know you're new to this position. But from the past, your agenda's online, and they look good. They're easy to follow. I think I'm correct in that anyways, that it's easy to find attachments and whatnot. It's a good, um, process. I like it. Um, I know that you have Matthew, who is a resident of, um, of West Sacramento, who is on your board. Do you have another board member, too, that lives in, uh, West Sacramento? I think that's what we had had in the past.
We have two parents that are Lighthouse parents, that are residents of West Sacramento. And we have a third parent, uh, who's also on the board. That's a West Sac resident.
Okay, thank you. That's great. And then, it looks like you're continuing to go back and forth with your board meetings from West Sacramento and then... I appreciate that. That's, we don't have a lot of oversight in this meeting, and so, but thank you for bringing all of the pieces that we've asked for here and, um, and delivering all of this in a...
I stand corrected. There's four board members that are West Sac residents, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's an increase, I think, in what you had before.
We have seven.
Well, that is all. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. We have our informational-only update on Elkhorn Dual Immersion. Autry Streak.
Good evening again. Come on up, you guys. Tonight, we have an information item focused on our Spanish Dual Immersion program at Elkhorn. And I'm joined by Director Stacy Tran, who supports, um, our multilingual learners as well as staff. Christina Hernandez, Assistant Principal at Elkhorn, and Mr. Jose Gutierrez, better known as Mr. G., Principal of Elkhorn. And so, what our plan is for this presentation is to share with you, um, one, an update on the, um, this program, which has been in existence for a while now. And to present to you a proposal for, um, having Elkhorn become a full dual immersion program to address some of the comments we heard from our WSTA members in terms of, um, what the experience is for our English-only learners at, um, Elkhorn because of, there's two pathways, and what that means for kids and what that means for staff. So, in the next few slides, we'll share with you an update and what the transition plan could possibly be. And I will turn it over to Stacy.
Thank you so much. Um, and first, I'd love to recognize the staff who came and stayed, um, and the parents who are here to support the program and hear about the plan. So, I'm very grateful, because it is a late night. Um, so, of course, um, our plan aligns to our strategic plan. We always want opportunities and for every student to succeed. We want to ensure that all students are provided opportunities and resources that they need. And ultimately, we want equity-focused teaching and learning. Um, so, first off, we're gonna talk about the dual immersion goals and program outcomes. Go ahead, two slides. Three slides. Thank you. Um, any scholar of dual-language programs hears about the pillars of dual immersion. So, the goals of any dual-language program is, first off, bilingualism and bili literacy. Second, grade-level achievement, and that's in both languages. And socio-cultural competence. So, they're not only learning the language, but they're learning the culture. And learning to appreciate not only the culture of the language they're studying, but really, all of the cultures in our community. Um, also, we wanted to mention that the DI program composition strives to be 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, which means 1/3 native Spanish speakers, 1/3 native English speakers, and then 1/3 of what we call heritage speakers, which are students who have Spanish in their background. Maybe a grandparent, maybe it's spoken, but they aren't fluent, and it's not spoken in the home. So, those are the ideal compositions for the, the language groups. On the next slide, please. Thank you. Our outcomes for the program are, first off, our bilingual pathway awards. We want to celebrate students' progress every step of the way. These kids, many are learning in a completely different language from kindergarten on, and that's not easy. So, we want to celebrate them not only when they graduate high school, but every, every step of the way. Also, we do hope they graduate high school with a seal of bili literacy. And we are in the middle of bili literacy testing at our high schools now, which is really exciting to see some of our former Elkhorn students go on to achieve the seal. And then ultimately, we want all of our students to be college and career ready and ready for the global economy that oftentimes requires speaking multiple languages. I'm gonna pass it on to Mr. G.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna speak a little bit about what our current school looks like, what the model is, and how we are. So, when you look at our enrollment currently, we do have the English-only classes, which is only one class per grade level from kinder through fifth. Um, and we have two dual-immersion classes. At the moment, we are dual-immersion from kinder through seventh grade. Uh, next year will be dual-immersion from kinder through eighth grade. Um, as you look at our English-only classes, you can see the increase in student population as we go up in grade levels with only one classroom. Um, so, IAPs, um, no matter how many there are, they all go into one class when they're in the English-only program. Uh, when we look at our, uh, enrollment, we're at 64% of our school is dual-immersion in K through fifth. Those are the students that are currently in that program. Um, and 54 as a total from K through seven. Current staffing, um, currently at Elkhorn are bilingual teachers who are authorized to teach, um, the Spanish classes. So, we have 66% of them in K through fifth, 44 in sixth through eighth. Uh, classified staff, about 70% of our classified staff is bilingual. That includes the office staff, um, as well as outside staff, yard duties, um, and cafeteria staff. When we look at our, currently, our intervention for special ed, um, we do, that is an area where we are specifically in English only. Um, that's an area that, for our dual-immersion program, is a little challenging at times. But we are focused, you know, our special ed is a big part of our school, um, and they do do a lot of work. Um, and I think, as we've heard, they sometimes are over with their students. So, we really appreciate the outreach and everything that they do. Um, with our outreach team, we are social worker, our youth outreach, our youth outreach specialist, and our bilingual liaison all speak Spanish, um, and our community school facilitator does as well. So, the plan that we are proposing, is... So, the plan that we're proposing, uh, at this time is gonna be a slow transition. We are not, uh, changing the whole school from one day to the next. It's gonna take some time. Uh, we will be eliminating one grade level a year, beginning of the year 25, 26. So, next year, we will still remain the same. We'll still have EO classes. We'll still have kinder EO classes. In 25, 26, we'll have three DI classes. So, it'll be the first year we will not have, uh, any EO kinder class. Uh, one of the important things is no students are getting displaced. Any student that's there now stays there. If they're in the EO pathway right now, they will stay there. If they're in kinder EO right now, kinder through eighth grade, they will still be there. Next year, we're not changing. So, next year, any student that comes in in kinder EO, all the way through eighth grade will be in, in the EO classes. No students are getting displaced from the school. They're all staying there, um, obviously, if they desire to stay there. But they will all be there. Um, for us, the important thing is that the school will still remain the neighborhood school. So, it'll still be the, the home school for the neighborhood. Parents will have the option to enroll them there, put them in the DI program, or they'll have an option, if that's not what they wish to do, they can go to, uh, they'll have options for different schools. But we will still remain the home school for the community. And, oh, go back a second. When you look at the, the transition, it will be a total of four teachers that will, that will be displaced, um, unless they, you know, have the ability to get their bilingual authorization. But it will be four teachers that will be displaced.
The case of the current model that we use is the 90-10 model. And that's what we've been using since we started the dual-immersion program, and that's what we hope to continue to use as we move along. So, when kinders enter kindergarten, they enter, they enter having 90% of the day in Spanish. Um, then they go to first grade, and they, they're at 80% Spanish, 20% English, and so forth going on. Once they get to third and fourth grade, that's become, that's when it becomes the 50-50 model. So, 50% of the day in English and 50% of their day in Spanish, which is the target. And like Mr. G. has already mentioned, um, his plan wouldn't take, next year would be a planning year, um, and then it would take place in 20, uh, 25, 26, when that would be our first, um, first year that we'd have three classes of kinder that would be dual-immersion. And then we would steadily increase. So, the next year would be kinder first grade, and so on, until we get to 2033 and 2034, when the school will be a full dual immersion.
And so, on this slide, we want to just kind of lay out a little bit more clearly and in more detail what this means for students and what it means for current staff. So, we'll start with students. Um, like Christina and Jose mentioned, it's a phased-out model. So, no currently enrolled students would be asked to leave. Um, the first year that the school would not offer the non-dual immersion pathway would be the 25, 26 school year. So, any incoming kinders where families are opting out of the, um, dual-immersion pathway would be offered the opportunity to, um, attend a neighboring school, Westmore Oaks, Riverbank, or Westfield. Um, and again, all current non-dual immersion students will remain at Elkhorn. So, even next year's kinders would stay there through eighth grade, if that's what the family decided. For staff, um, starting in, starting next school year, um, if kinder, the kinder EO class would be the first class to phase out, that means that the kinder EO teacher would be the first teacher who, if they did not have B-CLAD authorization or seniority, would be, um, working with HR early next year in the planning year to offer them priority vacancies across the district. So, displaced, we, we don't mean displaced from the district. It just means that they would be looking at a different assignment for the 25, 26 school year. And HR would start working with them as early as next fall to hear what their preferences are for assignment, um, and hopefully, being able to honor that, um, when assignments for the upcoming year are made. Um, and other supports, um, that are outlined in the CBA, when teachers are displaced, um, would be offered as well. So, assistance with moving, planning, paid planning time, um, especially if they're changing grade levels, um, and materials. Um, and currently, one of the teachers, um, so Farah and I, HR and I, met with the Elkhorn staff, I believe, last week. And one of the questions was, um, are there any supports for teachers who currently don't have the B-CLAD authorization but are interested? And we know that our County Office of Education is hoping and looking and planning, I believe, to offer, um, that opportunity, I think, within two years. But internally, as a district, we're looking to, um, looking into how we can support teachers that have that, that desire. So, just wanted to talk about a non-dual immersion staff and student.
So, in terms of a timeline, we don't want anyone to think that this is a conversation that the four of us came up with two weeks ago. This has really been a conversation that Elkhorn staff, um, and families have had since 2015, the inception of dual immersion. And I know, because I was there, I was a teacher there at the time. Um, so, the conversation, when we first phased out, uh, we had had an early exit program, um, which was, students learned Spanish. It was about 50-50, and third grade was the end. So, being a third-grade bilingual teacher, my job was to get students who had not had much time in English, suddenly proficient in English, and ready to have fourth grade completely in English. So, it's not an effective model. It cuts the students off. And then we noticed it wasn't a clear pathway to high school Spanish language arts, because students had academic language up to a third-grade education level, and then they had nothing until ninth grade. There was a huge gap. So, the dual immersion and the 90-10 model that Christina so eloquently explained, it really bridges the gap, and it provides support and incremental increases in the English because we understand that we want our students to, to have command over the English language. State testing is done in English, um, and it's important. But we want them to maintain that academic Spanish and have academic content areas in Spanish as well. So, that's, the conversation began, and I remember being part of the room, when teachers said, "Well, we're starting dual immersion. Is there a possibility that we could eventually become a full immersion, dual immersion school?" And we didn't have the, um, resources or the student population or the teacher demographics at the time. Um, and it's been quite a while, but we feel like now we're to the point where we're ready to move.
Okay, then, when we got into the 22 through 24, um, years of the dual immersion program, that there was some planning that was happening. Um, there was cabinet-level discussions. There was also discussions just amongst the teachers and the staff of what our program would look like moving forward. Um, we, we were able to go do some site visits throughout the area of other, um, dual-immersion programs in the area. And wherever we see that there was that, able to look at what schools were closest to us. I know some, um, staff went out to Fresno, to different areas to see what programs. Um, we also were able to send some staff to La Coseca for conferences, and also CAVE to help build that, that knowledge.
When it comes to communication, um, we had a meeting with Farah and Autry, with all staff, for them to ask their questions. Um, I've had one-on-one meetings with every staff member to discuss, um, the process and what the proposal is. Um, I've also had parent meetings, virtual as well as in-person, coffee with the principal, and I've also, uh, uploaded a YouTube video explaining the whole proposal to staff, uh, to parents, as well as the community.
And then, after this meeting, we're hoping to update the Elkhorn website with, um, an FAQ for parents and staff. Just people who may not have all of the details, but we're hoping to be able to do that, as well as bring this forward as an action item, um, to the board at the May 9th meeting.
Go ahead, Mark. Uh, so, like I said, the parent and community information, uh, we've done in-person, virtual. Um, we did the screencast that was posted on YouTube for all parents to, to be able to have access to. If they weren't able to make any of the meetings, they were able to see it there. Um, we are also, um, sending emails, as well as we're gonna upload, um, the video, as well as FAQs onto the website, um, to make sure that people understand the proposal, um, and that everything is out there for them to, to be transparent of what the proposal is and how it, it can, um, increase student achievement going forward.
Please. So, next, we're going to talk a little bit about student data, because all of the decisions that we make are evidence-based. They're not based on what's convenient or someone's preference, but really, we want to do what's best for students. Um, so, I wanted to start off with the Global California 2030 Initiative, which is huge. Um, it is, uh, an initiative that's just, uh, statewide, that started in 2017. And these, uh, goals include the fact that half of all K-12 students by the year 2030 will participate in programs leading to multilingualism. Three out of four graduating seniors in California will earn their state seal of bili literacy. Dual immersion programs throughout California will quadruple from 400 to 1620. Dual immersion programs throughout California will quadruple from four hundred to sixteen hundred in twenty twenty-three. And then finally, bilingual teacher authorizations will double by twenty thirty. So we feel like Elkhorn is really leading the charge in doing this work and taking the incredible program that they have and expanding it. Next slide, please. We wanted to show some dual immersion data trends, not specific to Elkhorn, but just research done by Collier and Thomas that shows the efficacy of dual language programs. So if you see the dashed line, not and and they're effective not only for English learner students, but English-only students. This graph focuses on our second language learners because oftentimes they're the ones who underperform on uh tests. Uh but if you look at the dashed line, that's English learner um average throughout the country. And if you look at the trajectory of the highest burgundy line, those are the students in two-way uh dual language programs, like the dual immersion program at Elkhorn. So as you can see, they don't just have good outcomes, they have better outcomes. And students from what any language background who participate in a dual language program outscore their English-only peers um in standard tests. Um and uh to address the the issues of inequity that are sometimes happening and that tend to happen when you have a strand of a program within a school, we feel like by implementing a full dual immersion program at Elkhorn, it will alleviate some of those inequities and will it will allow for the English-only teachers at Elkhorn to um have other teachers to collaborate. Because right now, we don't have common standards. Spanish language arts is very different from English language arts. Uh the assessments are oftentimes different, and so the data conversations and the data analysis that our teachers do are challenging, right? Because they don't have a true team to partner up. So we feel like um it's good for students and it's good for teachers because they get that collaboration and so.
So when we look at our data at Elkhorn, uh when it comes to the CASP, um on average, our dual immersion program is outscoring um our English-only by twelve percent when it comes to ELA. When it comes to math, we're they're on the same level. Uh when we look at our iReady data that is taken, um right now, they've taken it twice um this school year. Uh when we look at the reading, K through second, not every teacher administers it. So first grade is the only one that we had all three teachers administer. So what we can see is that in reading, our EO students are scoring five or five percent of our EO students are above or at grade level when it comes to reading in first grade, and DI is six point five percent. Um and that for math, in first grade, EO is about ten percent and DI is nine percent. Uh the reason that's important is because we do do ninety percent of instruction in Spanish in kinder, eighty percent of instruction in Spanish in first grade. So when you look at those comparisons, you're looking at, you know, that instruction, that large instruction they're gaining in Spanish is still, you know, helping them with their reading and their math scores, and the the iReady's done all in English. Uh and when we look through third through fifth grade, um our EO students are about fourteen percent, DI is thirty-three percent in reading. Uh and in math, EO is six percent, DI is a twenty percent. These are students that are at or above grade level on the iReady. And in the California Spanish Assessment, which is the Spanish Assessment test uh test for the state, uh sixty percent of students remain the same or improve their scale scale scores. Thirty-eight percent of students scored level two or three. So they are scoring at higher levels as well on the Spanish assessment that they take for the state.
Um so looking for the transition timeline for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, um this will be the year that we'll be working on our planning and preparation. So we'll be focused on professional learning opportunities for staff. And then we will hope to be collaborating with um and observing other dual immersion programs in the area, continue that work as as we grow every year and we learn from each other, to really building those parts.
So in the second column, we see that that's the year that we're hoping the transition would begin, um where Elkhorn would offer three dual immersion kinder classes. Um again, first through eighth grade would remain unchanged. You would still have two dual immersion classes and one English-only class.
And in the year twenty thirty-three, twenty thirty-four, I may have won the lottery, so I may not be here. But um I hope to be still be here at Elkhorn. Um and that will be the year that we'll be fully um a full DI school. Um every student will be part of the dual immersion program. Every student will have the opportunity to be bilingual. Um so it'll be uh the year that the whole school will be on the same page, the same level, and every student will have that opportunity.
So at this time, we welcome any feedback or questions you may have.
I believe we have public comments for this one?
Yes, we have two requests uh for public comment on this item. The first request is from Maria Garcia.
What is the description of the Jardín de Infantes for the New Year 2023-2024? How many students have matriculated in the 2023-2024? How many plazas are vacant this year? How many plazas are expected to be available for the 2025-2026? And how is guaranteed that the students of the neighborhood are not moved? Is the registration at the Jardín de Infantes to be made according to the schedule in 2025? What happens if students of Southport are registered in the Jardín de Infantes on the first day of registration? Do the students of the neighborhood still have a place? What do you mean by that, that Elkhorn only accepts students of double immersion, logistically? How will they do that? Will they not accept them? How will it be made in 2025 that guarantees that the students of the neighborhood are not moved? If the registration is free, who will register or come first? Will it occupy the seat first? Those who come to register first for kinder, will there be a place for our residents of the neighborhood according to the schedule? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
This is Jennifer. She's the interpreter. Thank you.
I figured.
Sorry about that. No worries. So Maria Garcia has came up to discuss um about the dual immersion for the family and community. Um she mentions that dual immersion is a wonderful program that, you know, discusses about two languages that learns um throughout the academic years for kinder through eighth grade. Uh she understands that students will be learning native language and English at the same time and how it promotes culture and diversity. Um she would want to know if you can bring dual immersion to any other schools in Washington Unified School District um in how we would go about with general education. Um she did have several questions. I might not remember them all. I do apologize. Um she wanted to know in regards to enrollment for the students. Um she wanted to know if there would be a guarantee that those students that are currently in Elkhorn would not be um misdisplaced um or removed, you know? Um because that is the resident schools. Um she also had questions in regards to the garden? Kindergarten, sorry. Kindergartens. Um what does it mean to only be DI students? Um will they be denied? Because there is a process when you go into the dual immersion. Um you have to take an exam, you gotta have to get approved, um and then you get into the program. So she does have concerns about that. Um she also wanted to know if is it if it is first come, first served um due to how the enrollment goes about about that? And then what about those students that belong to that resident school? How would they go forward about enrollment when it comes for their children to go to that school?
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, you can sit down. Thank you. And our next?
Our next public speaker on this item is Maria Ibarra.
Hello. Um I have uh three questions um for Elkhorn. Um first, I moved to West Sacramento about two to three years ago, and I tried to put my daughter in a Spanish-speaking school because from where she comes from, this program already works very well. And she started it since she was in kindergarten. So she's been like how everything was described, it does function because I've seen it through my daughter. So my daughter now is in fifth grade. And I went to uh the school district to move her, and I asked them that I wanted a double uh dual immersion program for her. Um so she's in fifth grade. Um she couldn't get into Elkhorn without taking a test first to see her um degree of of knowledge for Spanish. Um but she couldn't because she got nervous during the test. She meant she didn't write nothing. She didn't write what was asked of her. So then I never got a call back to see if my daughter had gone accepted to Elkhorn. And then now that I see that it's still kind of in progress, so does that mean that it's still under like construction? Or like, is it already something established but only in one school? Because they told me I can move her to Southport, to other schools, but they're only English-based. For me, I'm a Spanish speaker. I am fluent in both. But I want my daughter to be raised as if she was a Spanish speaker. Um so if there's a cutoff grade, which is fifth grade, to go back to English classes, why does it have to stop at fifth grade only for the dual immersion? Um if Spanish can be actually very complicated and a very lost language, you know, like hard to understand sometimes even to the best speakers. Um so if I were to move my daughter, she would be classified as falling out of dual immersion then for Wesac fully? Um because that's the part where I got lost in the presentation, you know? Um but yeah, I think those, yeah, those are the three I got so far. But thank you.
Thank you. Um we'll bring you guys up in a bit. But first, I'm looking at the time. It's close to ten. And we would like to um extend the meeting. I mean, I'd like to extend the meeting. Past ten. Okay, we gotta move. Second, um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to say aye, so we can now move past ten o'clock. Uh will you all please return back to the podium? And hopefully answer some of our families' questions and and in both English and Spanish.
I'll start with the most recent because that's what I remember the best. Uh we do, um in order to qualify students, all students who enter into the dual immersion program at Elkhorn do take an assessment, and that's to build those thirds. We need to figure out if you are a fully Spanish proficient student, um a somewhat proficient Spanish-speaking student, or you don't know any Spanish at all. And that's what we want. Some parents say, we don't speak Spanish at home. Can my child get in? And the answer is absolutely. We need kids like that. So we always, we have a day, we have donuts and coffee and pandulce, and we come in on a Saturday and schedule assessments. For students who desire to enter into the program after kindergarten, we also have an assess uh assessment because we want to make sure that we're setting them up for success and that we're equipped to meet their needs. So if a student comes in with um not fifth-grade academic level proficiency, for example, it would be a challenge, and we want to make sure that we're setting them up for success. We don't want them to be behind. And we currently have intervention, as you saw on the slide, we only have an intervention program in English. So if we were to have additional intervention supports in Spanish, I think it would be absolutely an option to accept more students, more of the heritage students who have a background in Spanish, but who may not have participated in a dual language program. So I look forward to hopefully expanding the program so that we are able to serve even more students. And to address Señora Maria's concerns about what about the neighborhood students, that was one of our impetus for wanting to expand the program. As it stands, we can only take fifty-two students in dual immersion kinder, twenty-six in each class. This would add another twenty-six. Um also, when we do review applications and assess students, we do give priority to neighborhood students. We want to make sure if there is a family who wants into the dual immersion who lives in the Elkhorn neighborhood boundaries, they absolutely will have a spot there if if they meet all of the other qualifications. Because we do want to prioritize that and value the families who live in the neighborhood and and want to invest there. And many of the Elkhorn families have lived in the neighborhood for generations. So we really want to value that and honor that because they're part of the community already.
I think that was most of their questions. But I believe we have questions on the
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Um great presentation. Um this just takes it all the way back for me personally, just uh um how much more involved my parents uh could have been, um because the want was there. Um and I would also encourage, we have two parents here, um before they leave uh for for you all, instead of just taking up the time or, you know, uh focusing on this piece, to just connect. Maybe they have, you know, more questions or just clarification is always important. Um pero gracias, eso para mí es increíble representando a Elkhorn y al igual que la comunidad y las familias. Me recuerda a qué tanto mis padres pudieron estar más involucrados porque las ganas estaban, querían, pero obviamente por el idioma siempre hay barreras. Entonces, um we are breaking barriers in West Sacramento and we're leading. And um thank you all for doing that that work con corazón. Uh so thank you. Gracias.
Um thank you for this uh presentation. I appreciated it. And um thank you for the recent tour that I had as well um at Elkhorn and seeing uh the kids in action. And it's been really neat to see this program grow since the very beginning um and see where we are now. So um I am thrilled with all the work that you're doing. And I think what I really, really appreciate about your staff is that you're so mindful of the community and of our families who are um not the ones that we get all the emails from and not the ones that show up very loud sometimes at our door set. Uh that you're thinking very clearly of the families who are sometimes the ones that are hesitant to come and speak in a meeting and to come and talk and and all the uh community members and and neighbors that you have that you've been doing so much outreach. I also appreciate that you've met with every staff member, that you've really taken the time to talk with the staff because this uh this can feel uncomfortable. It can feel uncomfortable to have a change like this. And so I appreciate all the work you're doing. Um I had taught for years in a magnet, a school within a school, and a school within a school is a huge challenge. It's a huge, I think, equity challenge because there's this, I mean, even the scores that you gave tonight, that can make you feel some sort of way when you're working at a school and you're seeing um this constant, you know, kind of comparison that just naturally happens and and you needed to do that tonight. But um I look forward to when um I think that this is the right path for it. It's the best path, I think, for our kids and our community, but to do it slow and thoughtfully, um I just really appreciate. So um thank you for that.
No, I, you know, I adore you guys. I adore the the thoughtfulness um that has always been put into this program even before it came to fruition by as Elkhorn, as Elkhorn being the primary site. Um and it's a long time coming, and it's it's a it's a ten-year plan, and it's scary and change- Um, and it's a long time coming and it's, it's a, it's a 10 year plan and it's scary and changes. Right? Um, and I agree, um, yeah, it makes people feel some sort of way when the scores are out there. And, um, and you have to do that to fill the evidence base. Because we as a board have asked you all to be evidence in everything we do. Um, and so appreciate that. And I continue to kind of support this and. And understand that there are, um, schools that we are, um, investing in, uh, that are close to the neighborhood. That, uh, families do have options to go to. And, uh, the feeling of being pushed out is real. And I'm, I don't want to diminish that. Um, so, um, acknowledge that it's, it's gonna be a hard, a hard 10 year journey.
Yeah, uh, so it's kind of been interesting to see the rise of Elkhorn into the DI program and how great it's been. Like, the three of us have been on the board since its inception. And it's amazing as to how popular this is and how many, you know. Started off with just one class and then it broke two classes. Now we're seeing it transform into an entire school. That's, I can't begin to tell you how great that. Um, having said that, I have a couple of questions. Actually, it's really only one question and it's more focused on, um. Like I saw the number, there's 26 kindergarteners right now. That's a lot for English only, right? That's a lot. So, um, maybe supporting, you know, those English only learners. Um, because as we heard. You know, that includes basically every English only person with an IEP has to go into that class, right? There's not a ton of support for 504 or whatever. So I'm just hoping that as we game this out. We make sure that we have supports for those features that have to maintain. Um, and for those students. Right? Make sure that, you know, the students with IEPs and 504s are, you know, having their needs addressed. Those, you know, I don't know if that's a question or a statement. It is a statement, you know, but i- i- it's also a question. Like, have, have we thought about?
Thought about that and it's something that, um, the teachers have shared their input about. And so we are looking into ways to, um, strengthen our supports for the English only students. Um, and doing the same thing for the students who are in the dual immersion pathway as well. Um, what that will look like, we'll, we'll determine that, but we, it's definitely a part of the conversation.
All right, my turn. Um, I got a lot of questions and I have a lot of questions because I talk to a lot of people. And I'm getting both sides. Um, question one. You had a parent night. Time was given a certain time and then it got shifted. So how many parents actually showed up?
So for, for the in-person one, we had about six parents that showed up. And I know the, the time shifted and, but the time shifted because I actually got input from parents saying. Six o'clock is too late for them. They have to go home, make dinner. So they were like, can you do it earlier? We also have Ballet Folclorico, which is on campus from 3:30 to 4:30. So I had parents that were, hey, I am gonna be there at 4:30. Can we shift it to five? So I got input from a lot of different parents. But that is also why I said, hey, I'm gonna do two virtual sessions as well afterwards. Because I know that if you can't be here because you're making dinner. I want you to have the option to also do it virtually. And I had, I had more attendance to the virtual sessions and the, I had one at nine AM and one at 6:00 PM. So, or 5:00 PM. So I did have more, uh, virtual, um, attendees.
And how many? Just roughly?
So my nine, nine AM, I had about 12. And then my 5:00 PM, I had about maybe like, I think maybe 16, 17. So even then I, you know, I knew that there was still more outreach that I needed to get out there. And that's when I said, I'm gonna put a YouTube video out there for parents that weren't able to make it, right? I uploaded the YouTube video, sent it to parents. Hey, I did it in Spanish and English.
How many views?
I think we're at like 78 views.
I'm asking questions because I'm telling you, I got people.
I know, I know. I, 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 it's about, we're about maybe 78 views on the video, um, at the moment. So I, you know, I'm gonna, I had coffee with the principal, had about maybe, I think like 16 people coffee with the principal. I'm gonna do some more outreach after this, continue to educate parents. I think education is the most important thing, uh, to be able to educate parents. And reaching parents, you know, continuing to reach them, continuing to get out there. Um, inviting them to events, inviting them to informational sessions. So this is not, you know, we're going to continue the whole, um, informational path for this.
Okay, the next question. All right. Um, you're saying that we need, we're, we're gonna change this to full school. What are the numbers that we currently have? How many people are asking that they want to start coming in next year, you know? For kindergarten next year and then to sustain that we can have a full school?
So obviously we can only have 26 students in kindergarten, uh, you know, 20, and we only have two DI classes and one EO class. So we have the capacity at that point right now.
So they, you already know for next year?
DI and the EO. Um, so I think for us, the important thing as we move up in grade levels. Is maintaining the students in those grade levels. Which brings about the support that we provide for them, right? The Spanish intervention, being able to provide those students with the actual support in Spanish and in English to be able to sustain that going forward. Um, I think that's very important for us. And it's also important for the students to have that, um, support going forward in both areas.
So we're, I'm looking at your numbers for current enrollment and program participation. And I see that you have your fifth graders, 17 and 19. So that's one class, right? Two classes, but one class of this. But then we have the dual immersion, 37, 27. Is that to say? How many classes are you having for sixth and seventh graders? And how many kids are in those classes? Or is it just one class and all 37 are there?
So six and seventh grade, you know, we go by period. So we have Spanish language arts. Uh, and right now we're doing science in Spanish, um, which we're gonna shift to doing history only in Spanish. Just because science in Spanish is sometimes difficult to train, to kind of move those skills to English and science just because of the vocabulary. Some of those, uh, specific skills that they need. So we're gonna do history in Spanish. Uh, the enrollment in those classes in middle school, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I'd have to actually look at the numbers. Uh, but like I said, sustainability, long-term is us using, uh, everything, every one of our resources. To sustain students with the intervention, the support, what they need in order to be successful.
Okay. I, I wrote on just about everything. So give me another one.
Yeah.
Another question that I have, I know you were talking about your, um, your, your numbers. Um, that you have as far as like the data for the testing. I'm curious to know how many of those kids. Grade level, you know, kinder through, oh, seventh. What is the percentage of each grade that actually live or come from the Broderick Bright area?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the exact number. Um, I would say in our, in our EO program, are you asking about both programs or one program specifically?
I'm talking about your DI program.
DI program, I'd have to look at the numbers specifically, um, and how students are, are categorized in our, in areas, of course. Um, I'd say for us, a, a large number are, you know, neighborhood kids. In our, in our kindergarten, they're getting enrolled, first grade. Um, I wouldn't know the specific number.
I'm just wondering, is it like more than 50%? Is it 60%? Is it 80%? Is it?
It's, we're probably about like 60% um, within our, our community, our community students. This is off, off the top of my head, right? Don't, don't hold me to these numbers right now.
I'm, I'm trying to find out because what I'm hearing is there's a lot of kids that are not from the Broderick Bright area. And we have a lot of coming out. So what is gonna happen with this program? When you have, don't have the neighborhood kids that are going. You're built, we're about to build a brand new school. And the kids in the ki, in the community are not gonna be able to go if they're English only. But that's where I, what I'm hearing and that's the, that's the reality. Change is hard, but this is what the, the community is also feeling.
Well, I think, I think a large part of it is the education that we do to parents and the community of what the program is. I think there is a lot of misconception of what the program is and there's a lot of unknown of what the program is. So I think for us, it's really educating parents, having those informational sessions of this is the program, right? You are not just learning Spanish, you know, K through five, right? You are gaining Spanish language and skills, but you're also relating those to the English as you move up. So a lot of it is the information that we provide to parents and the education we provide to parents. Um, so I, because I know that we have parents in our community that I have been asked. Like, so tell me about the program. And, you know, they have kids who are in fourth and fifth grade EO and they don't know about the program, right? And it's not a fault of the school. It's more of like, it's never been a highlighted thing to them. And now that we are going to this, they're more aware and they're like, what is the program? Tell me what this is. And for us, it's educating the community and the parents. Hey, we're not just shifting to this and your kids can't come, right? Your kids can be here and what dual immersion really is. And what help it's gonna provide these students going forward. And, you know, we live in California, Spanish is, is, is a big part of who we are here. So I think it's important to provide that information to the community. And have those meetings with parents that live across the street. Hey, your kid, if your kid, you're enrolling your kid and you have thoughts about, you know, I'm not sure about this. It's my responsibility and, you know, Christina's responsibility to educate these parents and be like, hey, sit down. Let's have a conversation of what the program is and how we work.
So why is it so important that we have a school? Instead of what, um, Ms. Garcia was saying, have it at other multiple schools? Help me, help, uh, because that's, that was one of her questions that didn't get answered. No worries.
So I think, you know, I think being at the school, obviously my first year principal at the school. I see the inequity and the way that it's difficult to manage two programs in one school, right? Your resources are split. You have an inequity of only having one EO class. I don't have anywhere else to put those students who are in EO, right? I have students who have been together from kinder to fifth, siblings who have been together from kinder to fifth. They're all siblings at this point from kinder to fifth, right? And it's really a challenge because I don't have anywhere else to move them, right? I can't move them into the DI program. Because sometimes the parents are like, no. And also some of them just are gonna struggle in that program because of their Spanish and we don't have the support right now for Spanish. So I think the challenge is when you are in the school there, you can see the inequity that's occurring. Right? You can see the challenges that are there. You can see the EO class that has seven IEPs that have nowhere else to move those IEP students, right? So it's really a challenge that we are balancing two things at once. And it's really difficult. And I care about my teachers. I, my first year there, but I, I love my teachers, right? It's really hard for me to have these conversations one-on-one and some of them I might, might not be there. It's a challenge. But they will be the first ones to tell you, this is inequitable, like. We've been through this, we've lived this. I have a class of 33, one kid leaves, another one comes in. It's difficult. And I, I'm passionate about my teachers and my students. And I see the inequity that's happening and it's hard. It's hard being there and trying to figure things out and just not being able to find a solution. Right now that will help alleviate this. And going forward, I think that, that the DI program is such a great program. And if we provide the education, we provide the knowledge to parents. We will have students that will have full conversations with you in Spanish, right? And their parents don't know Spanish. And it's so amazing to have a conversation with a fifth grader. And you're like, like he's a native born student. And it's amazing to have that. And it's amazing to have that going forward. And knowing that when they go to high school, they can get that seal of bilinguism and be successful. That for us is what we're here for, right? We want our students to have that. So it's important to have that for us.
So what I'm hearing is it's better to have it at a single site than throughout the district.
I can, I can, uh, add, add to that. Because it really is about how do we support all of our students using the resources? So just what you so passionately spoke about as our first year, who also is a principal of the year. Who will never say he's the principal of the year, but I will.
Right?
Yeah, no, no, no. Focus, focus on this.
He's on a mission right here.
We're on a mission here.
But the piece really with dual immersion and that goal of, uh, bilinguality. Is really how do we ensure that the supports? That we have instead of piecemealing them across the district where you're not going to have enough to have. The full support that students need if they're together in one location. That's where those resources can go. And then also for our English only students. Or families who are choosing not to go down that path. There are opportunities for them to have more broader experiences with their classmates in an English only setting. Than they do now, knowing that the English only portion of the staff is doing amazing work. With, because they care and they're taking on whatever is asked of them. But this really is an innovative way to support both our DI students and to support our English only students. I also want to commend, um. Admin on the level of outreach this year into the community. Because you're right, it is about, uh, more awareness that this, you hear DI. But really taking the time to explain to parents and families what it is. What is the benefit of it? Hearing what they need, hearing, well, I, I'm, my child's now in second grade, what do I do? And hearing like, well, what kind of supports can we provide? For families who want their children to enter but may not have the literacy needed in English and in Spanish. And as you go into those upper grades, which is so critical. So as you hear more and share it with us, that is really helpful. For us to expand a program that works for all of our Elkhorn learners.
I'm not. Okay, so, all right, um, so now. With that being said, okay, let's say it's the, it's, it's at Elkhorn Dual Immersion School. You're talking about sustainability. You've talked to some of the neighborhood, you get a few kids, maybe 50%. What schools or what other kids? Are we only focusing on those that are within Wesack that can come to Elkhorn? Or are we allowing others from outside to come to your, to Elkhorn?
What?
In the DI program?
I think Wesack is, is our community and our, you know, our people.
I want, I want to make sure I'm hearing that being said.
Yeah, Wesack is, is our community, our people, right? Our neighborhood, that's, that's what we want, right? That's, we want to be able to walk across the street and talk to a parent. You know, those are the people that we want to have at our school and those are the people that we are focused on having at our school. Right? People from other, that's a whole inner district, inner district transfer process, right? For us, our outreach is to our community, right? I want you who lives across the street to enroll your kid at the school that they can, you know, just come right into. So I think that is our priority is the education, the outreach to our community that's around us. Like I said, we're not gonna become a different school. We are still the community school. We're still the homeschool for those students. That's my number one priority is those students that we are their homeschool for.
The only reason why I'm asking is what if, the what if? So now we did the outreach, numbers are declining because, you know, there's not a lot of kids. Parents are not making babies the way they used to. So now we have less. So we understand that the enrollments are, you know, the numbers are declining, right? Are we going to be doing some outreach outside of Elkhorn's neighboring neighborhood to fill those numbers is what I'm asking.
You know, we're gonna reach out to our community, but if we do have, you know, low enrollment, we are gonna reach out, right? We, we want a full program. We want to bring, we want to have a program that is full. And if it's reaching out to outside of our, our community, right? It's educating those parents. It, district-wide is, it's educating the district office, right? Like, that's another part of it, right? When a parent goes to the DO and asks, what is the DI program? I want that person to be able to give them good, clean information of what we are. So our whole goal is to have a full school that is sustained, you know, primarily. The goal is to have our neighborhood students, but having WSD students is the main focus as well. Um, so that's, our goal is to have a full school, you know, having students where we, where, we are focused on our community. But if we have to bring in from outside, then yeah, they're more than welcome to come in.
Okay. I was like, just so you know, I got a lot of families that's across the street. From Elkhorn. Literally. So that's all I got. I know I had a lot of questions, sorry.
No.
Some of your questions triggered a thought for me. Um, in terms of now it's no longer a community-based school because it's basically everywhere. Those that are the EO students that will be, you know, that would naturally go there. Now have to go to Riverbank or Westfield. Are we going to be able, are we going to establish, uh, additional bus routes? For busing into other, um, other areas?
Yes, transportation for our families, Elkhorn families that choose not to participate in dual immersion. Providing them with, um, transportation to Westfield, Riverbank or Westmore Oaks is a part of our planning process.
Great. Um, and then. I'm not necessarily worried about not being able to fill three full classes. I'm actually worried about being able to fill more than. What hap- what's our process then? Is it a lottery? Is it, um, is it first come, first served as to who gets in? And do we have like a criteria base?
I can speak to that. So any student currently, I don't know about the date, but Elkhorn for the historically has had a waitlist for dual immersion kindergarten. And so they manage the waitlist. They monitor attendance and student enrollment very closely. And as spots open up, we do bring invite families in, assess them. And of course, if it's a native English speaker who leaves, that's who we hope to replace them with. Sometimes it doesn't work out. So we have an ongoing waitlist with, um, sometimes we bring in students and assess them. Be pending a spot opening up. Um, and we just accept to replace the the language group that is missing a student. So our hope would be to fill three classes and then have a a strong, robust waitlist to continue to to build a program and keep it strong and to avoid the attrition that you saw on the enrollment slide where we have classes in fifth grade sitting at seventeen students. Nobody wants that, right? We want full classes. We want as many students to benefit from this incredible program as possible. So we want to fill the kindergarten classes and have a a strong and frequent process for revising any absences, any attrition to bring new students in.
Okay, so then I take it to mean if you have a waitlist, that is first come, first served?
Um, yes. Although I think special considerations can be given to neighborhood students or students who speak the target language that we're looking for.
Thank you.
Let's say if we don't have it currently, then as a next step, let's work on making sure that we have that criteria very clear. Um, like it was shared with Lighthouse Charter, you know, and we we actually had them in their charter um, to make sure that the neighborhood or other pieces. So maybe we can look at that as a step. Anything else? All right, thank you. All right, another informational discussion item. Presentation of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six instructional calendar data and feedback by the calendar committee. Ms. Sarah.
Good evening. Yes, good evening, President Coffey. Okay, thank you. Trustees, Dr. Hildred, members of the community. Um, we are here and I'm joined by Director Matt Ainsworth and Assistant Superintendent of Fed Services, Ms. Streak. And we're here to share information regarding the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six instructional calendar. At the March twenty eighth board meeting, you requested us to bring this item back to you as an informational item before we seek approval. After the March twenty eighth board meeting, we met as a committee, so calendar committee met, and we discussed some priorities that and the why of our reasoning for recommending a three week winter break in the calendar. We also reviewed some historical data and some information. And we, in addition to all of that, we conducted a staff and community survey. Tonight, we're here to share with you some of the historical context that we discussed in our calendar committee meeting. Some of the priorities that we realized that we needed to have and some non-negotiables. We will also share with you tonight staff and community survey results that we conducted and have for you. We will conclude this presentation after reviewing all the information in letting you know of our recommendation that we will bring for approval in the future board meeting. At this time, I will go ahead and pass this on to Director Ainsworth and he will share with you some historical context.
Thank you. Um, okay, so we wanted to start with just some information about our ed code requirements regarding high school PE minutes. Um, so ed code is every ten days, four hundred minutes of PE. Um, and that's every ten days for the course of the school year. Um, our high schools do a four by four. So the students who take PE have a have a condensed year. They do their entire year of PE in one term. And so the state requires us to apply for a waiver to show that we are meeting those yearly PE minutes, a total of seven thousand two hundred um, in the eighteen to nineteen week span of one term. Uh, for our schedule, uh, it takes a minimum of eighty seven school days in a term to meet those instructional minutes. And so I just wanted to take you all through um, some some recent history of our past instructional calendars. So this is the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen calendar. Um, every one of them is going to have a hundred and eighty school days. This was an August sixteen start. Um, the first term ended before winter break uh, with had eighty five school days. Uh, that year we we, if we rotted, we would have not met our our PE minutes in the first term. Um, ninety five days in the second term. So obviously we bet it there. Uh, thank you, Mario. The two thousand eighteen nineteen again started August fifteenth. Um, first term had eighty four school days. Again, that was the year that we would have not met our instructional PE minutes. Uh, two thousand nineteen twenty started August fourteenth, eighty six school days uh, to the first term. Uh, another year where we did not, we would not have met our instructional PE minutes. Um, I skipped over two thousand twenty twenty one. Well, our calendar was a little weird that year. Just a just a minor tweak. Um, uh, so our twenty one twenty two calendar, um, we started August eleventh. That's the the second Wednesday of the month. I had eighty six school days, so missed it by one day. But still, uh, counting the minutes, we would have been under, I think, by like eighteen total minutes. So that's why eighty seven minutes, eighty seven days is our target. Uh, two thousand twenty two, twenty three. Thank you. Um, very close to what was uh, shared with as as our options. Um, August tenth start date, uh, we we were able to get to eighty nine days in the first trimester. Um, and so in two thousand twenty two, twenty three, we did meet our instructional minutes. Uh, one thing interesting about this calendar, um, the winter break uh, was thirteen school days long. Um, so almost three weeks uh, winter break that that year. Um, and the spring break was seven school days long. So um, a little more than than a week. And so uh, with our final day in June, so twenty two, twenty three, we were able to meet our instructional minutes. Um, and then twenty three, twenty four is the year that we are in. Um, every, oh, the calendars always made two years in advance. So two years prior to this calendar, uh, the priority of, one of the priorities of the calendar committee was to get that start date back a little bit because they kept creeping up earlier and earlier in August. So the calendar committee two years ago recommended pushing that first term to end after winter break, where high school finals would be that first week in January. Um, that would give us those extra five days to meet our PE requirements. Um, the feedback from parents, teachers and students, um, what it was not successful this year. Um, it was a a very, very hard challenge. The students over winter break had to retain, um, study for finals over their break, came back. Uh, it was so just a very, uh, it was a big struggle. Um, but we met our PE minutes and so that was good. But um, at 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 the at the loss of of student success. Um, and then next year's calendar committee, which our calendar, which was approved last February. Um, again, we're two years behind. So we created this calendar without knowing what was going to happen this year with the same recommendation of moving finals after winter break. Um, so we met our PE minutes. Um, but we are working on a plan to to address the finals before the term um, and what students can do in those five days after winter break to not um, interrupt the uh, the flow of their learning, but also to meet our instructional minutes. And so um, that's that's a little bit of the the why behind um, the biggest question from from that over one thousand responses we got, thank you, community and staff, um, was why are we changing? And and this was the the most glaring um, thing that we needed to address was to make sure that we are meeting our required minutes. Thank you.
Slide. So the priorities for this year's calendar committee was, of course, to make sure we're meeting state instructional minute requirements aligned to making sure the calendar is aligned to state and federal holidays. Um, ensuring that we're meeting our CSEA and WST contractual requirements. Um, and making sure that River City High School and Yolo High School first term finals are before winter break. Um, and making sure that we aligned our TK through fifth grade parent conferences to the first trimester grading window. And also to address some attendance concerns, um, even behavior concerns in the month of October by looking for ways to maybe break up that month a little bit with either a long weekend or or such. So those are the priorities for this school year's um, calendar committee. Next slide. Um, I just wanted, for the next couple of slides, share with you um, some neighboring high schools that are also on block schedule, just like we are at River City. So you can see that our earlier in August start date is not different from schools that are on similar calendars or schedules. Um, so here you see Center High School in Antelope with a start date of August seventh. Um, eighty eight days in the first semester, ninety two in the second. Next slide, please. Um, one of our high schools in Elk Grove, um, start date of August eighth, eighty nine days in the first semester, ninety one in the second semester. In both of those examples, we see that they end at the very end of May, which we understand is different from our two um, the calendars that you'll see in in the later in the slides, but we'll we'll address that in just a moment.
Okay. So I wanted to discuss and and share with you, um, what are some of the two? Why, how did we uh, come up with two options to provide in our um, in our survey to our staff and community? And how, what did we talk about in our calendar committee to ensure that those were the best options moving forward for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty uh, six school year? So as Matt shared, that we were not able to meet our required PE instructional uh, minutes of eighty eight in the first semester. So that was one of the the conversations. So those were, that was one of the non-negotiable. And the uh, in order to do that, we decided, as a committee, decided that the start date has to be early in order for us to meet that requirement. As we discussed the start date, because we have um, diverse voices um, and and people at the table in our um, calendar committee, there were some concerns shared from um, from other members um, regarding not having enough days um, or any um, working days in the month of June. All of those um, concerns are valid and are important to us. So we wanted to ensure that we were meeting everyone's concern and we were trying to put together a calendar that met um, all of those requirements and accommodated all students and staff and families. So we came up with two options that met all of those requirements. Option A with two weeks of winter break and two weeks of spring break. And then, next slide, please. Option B was our original option that we shared was um, three weeks of winter break and one week of spring break. Both of these options ensure that we will meet the PE instructional minutes required um, that are required. And then also, we will be able to accommodate all concerns that staff shared and students shared. So those were the two options that we then offered in our um, or shared in our um, survey. And then um, we we received some, you know, feedback and Ms. Streak will share the results with you regarding the both options.
So as was mentioned, we surveyed both our staff and our families. And um, over the course of um, about eleven days, ten days, nine days, we extended it. So um, anyway, just to give people an opportunity to really um, make their voice heard. Um, we, of course, offered it in our dominant languages. Um, and then we laid out what the parameters were in the survey. Um, one hundred eighty school days, first day of school would be August sixth, making sure that both semesters were balanced. Um, and we ensured parents, whether it was option A or option B that was selected, that expanded learning opportunities would still be offered to families needing that service during the the breaks as it is now. So for both winter break and spring break. Next slide, please. So we wanted to share those survey responses with you. Um, in blue, you'll see our um, community or family responses. Green, certificated staff. Um, I think that's orange, classified staff. And then our students who participated and um, survey responses that selected other. So um, we had sixty six percent of our responses came from our our families. Um, and then roughly a little bit over thirty percent, I'm sorry, forty five percent came from our staff. Next slide. So option A with the two week winter break, two week spring break um, was the overwhelming majority. Um, with option B coming in with thirty one percent of favorable responses. Slide.
So after reviewing everything and the survey results, the committee um, recommends that we um, move forward with option A because it is one of the best options that we have thus far um, recommended or or asked for um, to ask for approval because it meets the requirement of the eighty eight PE instructional days as well as all of the requirements of um, that we have from staff. It also um, addresses some of the areas that we needed to have some breaks. So in October, um, a a longer spring break. So to address some um, attendance issues. We also wanted to make sure that instead of having just one day in June, that we have a robust week. Because that way we, if it's one day, then we will have attendance issue from staff and students. Nobody will come, we'll have a one week and that way it will be a robust week and then we don't have those issues. So the option A was the best option. And um, we're here to answer any questions that you have and then we will come back um, in future board meetings to seek approval for option A.
Any public comments? Board comment? Yes? Um, we have no public comments on this?
We had three pre-submitted public comments.
We had pre-submitted written comments which are in the.
We did read them all, it was many hours ago.
I'm sorry, five pre-submitted public comments regarding this item, but nothing live in person.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Um, I will, I will just be brief with this. I appreciate the work you did. Thank you for um, going back out to the community with the survey. And you can tell a thousand people, I mean, this is a hot button issue. Calendars usually, I think, are uh, with people in change. And so um, I think that your option A makes sense. Um, had there been an option to stay the same, I imagine you probably would have had a lot of people do that. I know that that was what a lot of um, the comments that I received were. Um, why do we need to change? With the exception to your point of high school testing. I mean, people didn't like that this year, but looking at the years past. So um, if between now and the time you come next to us, there is an option to um, end a week earlier um, and take out that spring break being two weeks, then um, you know, I'd be interested to see that. Otherwise, um, the the option A makes sense that you were.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, so most of the people that I had uh, heard comments from were displeased with the idea that there are only these two options. And then if you wanted to make a comment, you had to pick one of these two in order to submit, right? You couldn't say, hey, here's what I propose. Or you couldn't, you know, there wasn't a third option. The stay the same wasn't a choice or other wasn't a choice, right? Like, it was, this is it, A or B. And that's, that's your only option. And that's where I heard. Like it was, this is it, A or B, and that's, that's your only option. And that's where I heard most of the comments. In terms of the PE minutes, it strikes me as odd that the, the, we, we do all our PE minutes in one, one semester?
Two semester?
So ninth graders would take their, their PE class, but one whole year's worth of PE, they do it all in a semester.
Why, I mean?
That's the four by four, they, they
Right, but couldn't it be done so that it's easier, it's easier to meet?
So the ninth graders actually take two courses of PE, they take their team sports and individual sports. So they, they, a majority of them are taking PE both semesters. But a semester has to meet a year's worth of PE minutes to count as
Okay, tenth grade.
That's right, so team sports first and then individual sports. So they, they have to get the year's worth, the eighty-seven days in their term to, to meet their minute.
It's the way the high schools set up the, the block schedule.
Just like their, their, just like their math block, that they would have to take their entire year's worth of math.
Yeah, I, I, because I remember going PE every single day of my high school career, like from freshman until senior year. It just wasn't an option, just do it, you know, all truncated into one area. So I'm, apparently, I'm an old man, I get it, trust me, don't need to throw insults my way. So, okay, so that's basically it. The, the only, the only question I have was about that. I, I will say about going in, you, you made the comment about a robust work week or into June. I'll say, there's not a lot of teaching going on in that last week of June. There is very little in fact. And, and I can say this as a parent, a student, who's, you know, in, in, you know, grades where it, it's basically, you're getting prepared to leave, right? You're getting prepared to move on to a different, you're maybe talking about what to expect. But you're not, you're not getting the educational, you know, hey, we need to do, you know, long division here and practice that. That's not what it is in that last week. So I, I'm, you know, I just want us to be clear that when you say robust, that's not as robust as we talk about. Maybe it's, yes, we're actually getting, you know, hours. But it, it's not the same, right?
Okay, I have no question. Okay, well, this is just information, so. I was like, we're good here. Now we're going to next. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, now we're headed to consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Sorry, can I get a motion to approve? I realize.
Oh, push it up.
Okay. Do we have to wave? Okay. I was like, can we?
I second.
Okay, are we allowed to?
Yeah.
Do it even when she's not?
All in favor, aye.
Okay.
We do the wave.
Do the wave, okay. Wow, we're getting delirious.
We can ask the attorney who's been waiting inside.
Okay, so we have a motion by Pazadi and move by Wong, all in favor?
Aye.
I too say aye. Okay, good to go. Action items. P1, the adoption of resolution, approval of the, of the use of high school pupil grant eligibility for the construction of elementary and middle school classrooms at Westmore Oaks School. Monique, go.
Thank you. This evening, we're asking for your approval of this resolution that could bring into our district about eight point three million dollars for facilities-related projects. Background on this resolution, it's part of the school facilities program with the state of California. This program provides funding for schools to support their facilities needs. It's called a grant, but it's actually reimbursement for monies already spent. We applied for this grant in August of twenty-one and it takes a long time for us to go through that process and eventually receive the money. When we submit for the grant, we actually don't know if we're really eligible for the grant until the state reviews it. And the state reviewed our application and identified that the Westmore Oaks Fallbrook Homecoming Project that we did with the Measure V funding is not eligible based on elementary or middle school criteria. However, it is eligible based upon high school criteria. So think of what the school used to be. In order to be able to advance our application, we are required to submit this resolution. It's basically a paperwork, it's a form, you know, so that the board's approving, yes, we want to go forward with, under the high school eligibility. Therefore, what we're asking is your approval of this resolution. It would advance our application and help us be eligible for potentially eight point three million dollars. With that money, depending on when we receive it, if we've spent all of our monies and finished all of our Measure V project, we can use it for any district-related facilities project. If we receive it before we expend our Measure V projects, we need to use it for Measure V related.
All right. Any public comments? Any questions from the board? I second. Okay, move and second, all in favor?
Aye.
I too say aye. Okay. And next. P2, approval of the Out of State Conference for Unbound Ed Standards Institute, June tenth through thirteenth, twenty twenty-four in Denver, Colorado. Autry Streak.
Did I say good morning?
Not yet, not yet, we're
Do it, just do it.
So I am joined this late, late evening with, come on up, with some of our wonderful WUSD teachers who last summer had the experience of participating in Unbound Ed Standards Institute. And so I'm joined by Annie Cole, our secondary math department lead, and Letizia Franco, who's a third grade teacher at Westfield, and Erica Leon, who's one of our intervention specialists at Riverbank. And so I'm going to read our item and then I want you to hear a little bit from them about their experience and how what they've learned at Standards Institute has impacted their daily practice this year. So during the summer of twenty twenty-three, WUSD teachers, administrators, support staff and district leadership partnered with Unbound Ed to identify and address context-specific opportunities to ensure all students receive engaging, affirming and meaningful instruction. This work aligns with the district's focus on standards-based learning and instruction and reflecting on student data to inform instruction towards mastery of standards. The partnership with Unbound Ed continued this school year, where our professional learning days, we had someone join us from Unbound Ed to explain the GLEAM framework to teachers at large. And then ongoing training for site administrators and support staff. And we had a group of teachers participate in a math collaborative. And so for this item, what we are asking is, we're looking to continue our partnership with Unbound Ed by sending additional WUSD employees to a four-day Standards Institute this summer in Denver, June tenth through the thirteenth, providing an opportunity for administrators and teachers who were not able to attend last summer to participate in this experience with other educators from across the nation as well as their WUSD colleagues. The Unbound Ed Standards Institute will support administrators and teachers in exploring the impacts, we heard from some of our black students earlier, the impacts of racist and biased instruction and experiences that they have unfortunately in some of our schools. Attendees will identify specific mindsets and practices that embody engaging, affirming and meaningful instruction. The Standards Institute continues to serve as an essential step in the process to align the work of our professional learning communities to be rooted in our equity principles, strategic plan and our teaching and learning plan in order to deliver on our Washington Unified Promise of Equity Excellence and Empowerment for Every Student Every Day. And so we are asking to send a group of forty employees to participate this summer in Denver, Colorado for a fiscal impact of one hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars using expiring ESSR dollars. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to, anybody have a preference to go first or last? Okay, thanks, thanks, Annie.
Hi, so again, I'm Annie Cole, I'm the math department chair at River City High School. I was part of the first group who went at the beginning of last summer over to Denver. I'm someone who I enjoy going to conferences, I have a love of learning. And this by far was the best conference that I've ever been to. It was also the longest and most hour, it was a five full-day conference, it was from eight to five-thirty, like the entire day. We were working the whole time. But one of the things that I think was very beneficial was that you chose the strand and you were with the same people throughout the whole week. So that you really had a chance to delve into what your particular topic was that you were learning. All of the different strands throughout, we're still talking about GLEAM, which is the grade level engaging, affirming and meaningful instruction. So I specifically did the math strand with that. I found it to be very helpful in the meetings themselves, just because the grade level part is already what we're already doing with PLCs, so it's not seeming like it was a new thing. It's building on what we're already doing, what we already value in this district, is trying to make sure we're teaching to standards for students. But adding in that affirming and the meaningful piece was speaking a little bit to what Autry was talking about with making sure students feel affirmed in the classroom. And that was, I think, that extra piece that I hadn't really seen a lot before in a lot of other conferences. It was very impactful to be able to have the opportunity in the last hour and a half of each day after we had our strands, we got to meet as a whole district. And I got to, you know, meeting the superintendent, meeting all of these people that I don't normally get a chance to have conversations with and have these in-depth planning sessions with. And in order to be able to say as a group, hey, you know what, this is a really awesome conference, I think we should send more people this summer. And even then, they sent a second contingent the month later, just because we all found it was so important for us to continue this learning. But obviously, the more people we can have involved with this learning, the better. The things that I learned there, I was able to bring back to my department as we're searching for piloting new curriculum of bringing a lot of those aspects back. I was able to use them in department meetings and PL throughout the year. But the more people that we have, the more people we can have kind of buy into the GLEAM Kool-Aid, I guess you could say, right? Of really getting everybody into this same mindset of that we can make a difference and we can actually do this grade level instruction. We can take these ideas that we have at a conference and if you have different people, you have administrators, right, in the office and administrators from sites and you have teachers and you have, right, the, the reading specialists and all of these people on board that we can really create a cohesive message for our district and move forward with it. That it's not just, oh, we did it last summer, now we're done. No, we need to send more people this summer to keep the message going so that we can build that message with more people throughout the district, we can actually have a more meaningful impact with instruction in the classrooms with the students. So I think that was everything that I had been planning on saying, so I'll let other people.
Annie was our note taker, in that same time at the day that she mentioned, was so gung ho and so enthusiastic about the learning.
I don't believe that.
She was our note taker, she transcribed everything we talked about and we held us accountable.
Correct, yeah. Good evening, can I still say that? It's good morning, I don't know. I'm Letizia Franco, I am a third grade teacher at Westfield. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my thoughts. I'd like to share about my experience with Unbound Ed, particularly my attendance at the Core Learning Elementary Reading Academy Pathway, pathway that I chose. This pathway
Annie called it strand, but it's interchange of, and Letizia referred it as a path.
Correct, yes. This pathway provided educators with a strong foundation and standards-aligned and evidence-informed reading practices rooted in the science of reading. Over the span of five days, I was immersed in a learning environment alongside teachers from across the nation, all under the guidance of dedicated presenters. The knowledge presented by these experts surpassed any other conference I've attended. Their eagerness to share information in a manner that's conducive to impactful teaching was truly remarkable. Each day concluded with a district-wide collaboration session where our team came together to debrief and exchange insights from our respective pathways. The atmosphere was charged with enthusiasm as we shared our reflections, realizing the profound impact that the experience, the experience was having on each of us. Surrounded by fellow educators who were equally eager to learn and share was another amazing part of this whole experience. Attending Unbound Ed was, has fundamentally changed my approach to teaching. I gained profound insights and practical strategies tailored specifically to enhance literacy instruction, making the content highly relevant and readily applicable to my classroom. Reflecting on my experience, I'm struck by the realization that the impact of this conference should not be confined to those fortunate enough to attend. It's vital that we extend this opportunity to others, ensuring that all students benefit from the transformative power of high-quality literacy instruction. I urge you to consider the importance, importance of sending more of our colleagues to Unbound Ed. Investing in professional development opportunities like this not only enhances instruction within our classrooms, but also fosters a culture of excellence within our school community. While I wish I could claim to be fully equipped to return and train others based on my attendance alone, the reality is that I'm still on my journey to refining my literacy instruction. I feel confident in my progress, yet I recognize that there's still more to learn. I cannot replicate the immersive experience provided by Unbound Ed. The caliber of instruction and the presenters of, of, at, at Unbound Ed is unparalleled. Renowned educators, experts and experts-led sessions and workshops shared cutting-edge research, best practices and innovative approaches to teaching reading. Their expertise far exceeds what I could offer in a training capacity, which is why sending others to them would be the most beneficial choice. I want to express, express my sincere gratitude for your time and wish to underscore the exceptional experience I had. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Erica was a part of our Denver cohort. Come on up.
Good evening, I'm here to share about my experience at Denver last year. As an intervention specialist focusing on reading, I went to the Core Learning Elementary Reading Academy Pathway, the same as Letizia. So my pathway focused on grade level reading strategies, so the whole GLEAM, we really just focused on that grade level piece of reading. And the strategies moved across tender through fifth grade. And we dove into the five pillars of reading and there's specific strategies, assessments and tools to use to support students in becoming grade level readers. Over this past year, I have been able to use what I learned daily to support students in intervention. I have also been able to share strategies with my colleagues both at my site and across the district, leading PLT. I'm sorry, it's eleven o'clock. Okay, anyway, since I attended this training, I was invited also to be part of the pilot for the Core's Online Academy which also gave me another chance to dive in even deeper into the phonics section and then provide them feedback. So that was another bonus that I got from it. It is my hope that the literacy coaches, there's one at Westfield and there will be one at Riverbank next year. So I'm hoping that both of them, as well as administration, can go to the Core Learning Leadership for Literacy Strand. This summer, this pathway will specifically target how to implement the science of reading strategies across across systems currently in place, as well as develop tools, skills, and processes for assessing school-wide literacy programs, and how to build professional capacity to support students in becoming successful readers. This would provide an opportunity for discussions on how to strategically, strategically align science-based instruction throughout all classrooms in our district and have a deeper look into the ELA programs being piloted over the next few years. I do want to say that one of the biggest highlights for me was getting to debrief daily with everyone that attended, just like both of them have mentioned as well. The discussions were powerful. They were, there were representatives from all over the district, including our superintendent, assistant superintendents, but also directors, coaches, intervention specialists, and teachers from Kinder through high school. And we reflected on past practices, critically examined existing methodologies, and collectively identified the shifts needed to propel our students toward academic success. The sharing of insights, challenges, and aspirations fostered an environment of collaboration and collective growth across Washington Unified School District. And it's helped to open up conversations over this year with both Matt and Autry about what we're seeing with reading district-wide. And so, it's really fostered this growth of community within all areas of WUSD. So, it's just, was really powerful experience, and I hope that more people get to experience.
So, are there any questions?
Any public comments?
No public comments.
All right. Any comments? Just making sure, just making sure. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you. I deeply appreciate all of you and the work that you do, and I've seen you in action in the classrooms. And thank you for giving your evening this late. My question centers around looking at, and, and we had a beautiful presentation, a special board meeting, on many of these topics, and you did a phenomenal job. We had administrators talk about how this is some of the best work that they've done. So, I have no doubt that this is not, you know, incredible. So, my question comes from, I've seen that we've trained about sixty-eight people roughly, if I go through the agendas of how many people have gone over time. We know this, this funding that we've had has been a huge gift. I mean, before, there's many not-good things about COVID, but we were in a different place, and we wouldn't have been able to send people to professional development like this. And so, knowing that this funding is sunsetting and it's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, we could send... Did I say that correctly? It's very late. Yes. So, for forty people, my question is, is there a way that we can work with Unbound Ed, as we have in the past, to bring people here for that amount of money that we could then train more than forty people? Or that we could work on, I know this funding expires in the fall, but we could prepay them for a year's work or something like that? Or some, there's some other ways that we can use this money, knowing it's going away, to impact even more than forty.
So, thank you for that question. And we also sent people to a locally-designed Unbound Ed Summit in Stockton at the end of last summer. And that was really for folks who weren't able to participate in the more extensive experience. Again, we sent teachers and administrators. The idea was to make sure every school was represented, every grade level. We wanted all of our grade-level leads, our department chairs, trained. But the experience in Stockton was very different from the full day. Then, it was five-day institute. The summits that are locally-designed that Unbound Ed does provide, they're only two days. And the cost would be a little bit less, and we would not be able to offer all of the pathways that the Standards Institute offers. I believe they offer seven pathways. We would be able to probably offer up to four at the most. So, you get the full experience at the actual institute. The summit is like an institute light, only two days with less access to the off, all offering.
Have we tried reaching out to them and, and saying, could we do this internally, not in Stockton, but in Washington Unified for, for a price tag similar to this?
Yes, that's, that, that's exactly what, what I meant when I responded initially. The Stockton one was, we were invited because a county office of ed hosted one, and we had to pay for each of our participants, and it was the closest one to us. But again, the experiences are very different because it's, it's much shorter, and then our participants wouldn't have access to all the pathways.
I think your question is, we haven't priced that out about inviting them to host our own, so...
I have. So, yeah. I'm sorry. The cost, the cost, the cost is about fifty thousand dollars for up to fifty participants, and that's offering two pathways. So, and only twenty-five participants per pathway. So, if we wanted to offer four pathways, that would be, what, two hundred thousand? No, one hundred thousand. I mean, yes, you could definitely train more people that way, but again, it's not the full four-day now experience. It's only two days. So, what they cover is much more limited and condensed. And then, you don't have the added benefit of hearing and learning from educators who work in other contexts, who might be struggling or grappling or innovating in ways that we just haven't thought about locally. So, that's another benefit of going to a national conference, the national institute.
So, I, I see the number, and it's a lot, like, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And then, we see another one for forty-four thousand, and then another one for thirty-five hundred. So, between these three out-of-state conferences, it's over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, right? This one's ESER funding, so I'm less concerned about that. But I do have concerns about all the other things we can use ESER funding for, like, maybe one-time money for funding for, you know, salaries. You know, there's other means that, as I, as I look at some of our issues that are on our, on our horizon as well, that I, I think are also important. And that making sure that, you know, making sure that there's the ability to have flexibility to use, you know, maybe one-time funding for salaries in terms of compensation for whatever we, we, we deem necessary. Question I would have is, how much do we have left in our ESER account?
So, there are multiple ESER accounts, but the one that we were selecting for this one has a balance of two hundred forty-three thousand dollars.
Minus the one eighty-eight?
I believe so, yes.
Three...
I'm sorry, I said that wrong. No, it, this is what it is before this expense.
Okay, so sixty thousand will be remaining in that.
And, and the second item is not coming from ESER dollars.
I know what that, that's coming from a different fund, so that's something else. But I'm just looking. I, I'll say this, from this, this point forward, you know, next year, I'm not, I'm not approving, I won't personally be voting in favor of out-of-state. So, that's just something we shouldn't be doing in a time when we're going to be in, you know, we've been told time and time again, we're going to be in a serious budget.
I have one more. Sorry, it's a lot of money, it's a big decision. This has kept me up multiple nights this week. So, because we've paid about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars already to train sixty-eight people. So, here's my question, because what I heard tonight was, we need more people, we need more people, but we're only going to get forty more people. And so, what's going to happen then? I, I just want a commitment that, that we will be in a place, if we send forty more people and use it this way versus bringing people in, that we'll be in a place to sustain this and to, that this will, because we're not going to have this money again. And so, I, that's where I am right now in terms of, if you say one hundred percent, we have a plan, forty more people trained, we have sixty-eight who've been trained, and we will be able to do this internally moving forward, you know, then, then that's, I think, what I need to hear. And that we're not sending the same people, it's different people or...
Oh, go ahead. That, that is the rash rationale, really, to build the knowledge and skills to ensure that our employees who are going have the knowledge and skills to train others. Because that's a, a big piece, I think, I know in my many years of experiences and working with teachers in particular, it has been about the quality of PD really makes a difference. And when we're talking about something as transformative as what we find in the Standards Institute, making sure that staff has the knowledge and skills and confidence to begin to train others is what we're trying to build with this new bench and giving that priority, yes, to the, to those who are available. Again, it's June, so people are off. So, it really is that availability. And then, as we did this year, the Denver group and the Washington group met in August, in July, in August, to help us plan for the first PL day in August. And then, they met and continued to help us plan for our PL day that was in February. So, it's already started, and it will just allow us to, as I, you all hear me say a lot, I'm, I want us to be able to accelerate student achievement based on the learning disruption that we had that was out of anyone's control. But this is a way to bring standards and a culturally relevant pedagogy methodology that we can broaden and share across the district.
Anybody else? Okay, I have maybe one or two questions. Hopefully, that's it. My question is, you said how much it was that we had left in that, that little bank?
In that particular funding stream from ESER dollars is two hundred forty thousand dollars.
So, my question is, can we send more so we can use all of the money and then be done with it, since it's expiring? Like, does it have to be forty?
I would love to send more people. I would love to be able to open up additional spots. We have our intervention specialists who weren't able to go. We have literacy coaches, we have department chairs, we have people who couldn't go to a different pathway. So, I would love to be able to send more people. Thank you. So, yes, we do have the ESER dollars to increase the number of seats.
If we have, I was going to say, if we have, I don't know how this works. If you have the numbers, we know that, I mean, the money's going to go away, right? It's kind of like, use it or lose it. If we have the ability to add the, the numbers, can we do it? Or do we have to come back here and say? Okay? Can we just say, exhaust those funds so we don't, and send as many as you can?
Yes.
On that, yes, on that specific...
The Standards Institute.
How do I do that? Okay, I want to make a motion.
Unless you have other questions.
No, I don't have, that was my, that was my, that was my two questions.
To frame the motion, it would be, I make a motion to amend the recommendation to use the expiring, all of the expiring ESER.
I second.
I got tricked.
I'm sorry, I meant to say...
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Okay, yes, please.
I, I make the motion to amend the request to use the balance of Unbound Ed to increase the number of employees. Fail this with the intention to utilize our PD plans moving forward to help infrastructure, the long-term infrastructure for Washington.
All right.
There's a motion, but you...
So, we could still have a discussion after, so, okay. So, I second that. All right. Do we have to vote on that too?
There any more?
I have one before voting on that, because we approved fifty-four thousand dollars for the partnership with Unbound Ed this year that the principals and others were talking to us about. We did that on November ninth, and so, could we still, do you still want to do something like that and work with them for the year? Because then, you could use that funds for that, and that could be a year-long time. So, I'm a little hesitant.
Oh, yes.
I don't know, I don't know if I approve that.
So, they do, they do offer a service that I think we could probably decide as a team whether we could benefit from it, where they would come and basically help us really think about how to and plan how to implement GLEAM instruction across the district. They would do co-observations with us, co-classroom visits with teachers and administrators. They also offer, this year, they offered a, a leadership institute specifically for leadership teams. So, they do have other ways that, there are other ways that we could partner with them during the school year.
Were you planning on using these funds for that?
Well, we're working on our new LCAP too, so not necessarily. I think the greatest investment in the variety of ways that we've worked with Unbound Ed, I think our biggest bang for our buck has been sending our staff to Standards Institute. That's where we've seen the most return on the investment.
Now, I got a question. So, didn't, I'm sorry, did one of you say that there was an online academy as well? Or an online institute?
The pathway that I took was Core. Core is a...
Right, right.
And so, they started up their, their online academy, so combined. And so, they were piloting it. For those of us that, that pathway, they offered us to pilot. More broad, more broad this or whatever.
Okay. Yeah, GLEAM is really what we're after. So, anytime we can, any way that we can partner with them to strengthen our implementation of grade-level engaging, affirming, and meaningful instruction in all of our classrooms and all of our systems, I think that's really what we're after. So, that might be Standards Institute, that might be a local summit, that might be them helping us plan implementation, or a leadership institute. Yes.
Okay. You amended it, and I would like to second that amendment. Any questions or we vote? Sorry, help me. Okay.
Unless there's more discussion.
All right. Any more questions, Al? Okay.
I know, I'm sorry.
I apologize, but I had to ask.
No, 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 you're fine. Okay, so, vote, all in favor? Aye. And I too say aye. Okay. There you go. Was there a no?
I said aye.
Oh, okay.
Not saying no, you people.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next one. I know. Approval of the out-of-state conference Broadway Teachers Workshop, July fifteenth through eighteenth in New York City, New York. Autry Streek.
Yes, and I wasn't planning to have the principal of Westfield with me, but she was here in support of colleagues, so all the way to the bitter end.
Which one, wait, did I miss the wrong one?
Are we, did I go out of order?
No, I went out of order, sorry. Approval of the out-of-state innovations. Yeah, I was on the wrong one. Approval of the out-of-state innovation some, school some...
Approval of the out-of-state innovation some, school summits conference, July 8th through 12th in Las Vegas, Nevada. I am sorry.
Yes, and so this, this professional learning investment is for a group of staff members from Westfield. They've had other members attend earlier in the year. And at the board's direction, we made sure that this was the closest location where this unique conference is offered. Las Vegas is the closest place to Northern California where it's offered. And so our hope is to send additional staff for a fiscal impact of $42,000, which would be paid for using the school's CSI funds. Part of allowability for those funds is to train teachers and train staff. And so that's what we're hoping to get your approval to do tonight. Just in case you have any questions.
Any public comments? Just tell me. Okay. Any questions from the board or comments?
Thank you for staying here so late, and we really appreciate you. And I think having this in your SIPSA, you know, is, makes this decision a lot easier to do right now. I think that for next year, just because of our budget, that's what we're talking, the budget, budget, budget. So that I agree with Vice President Pizzotti that we'll have to really look carefully at, as you're thinking about your SIPSA for next year, at out-of-state travel. But I support it tonight.
And to that point, I'll say, I know this is for next year in terms of fiscal year, July 1, or July 8. I'll approve it this year, but again, my comments remain the same. I won't approve next.
Can I say some?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry to keep you here all night.
No, it's okay. I was not playing on speaking tonight. I really did just come to support my amazing teacher, Ms. Franco, and as well as the dual immersion team from Elkhorn. But I do want to say, and I, you know, I understand the expense, and if it was in California, that would make, and I'm talking to them and trying to convince them, you have to do this in California. Innovative School Summit has transformed my school culture with only sending seven of my staff members. So I can only imagine what it will do if I'm able to send more. It's really targeting school climate and culture and bringing innovative teaching strategies. And I've seen my teachers, if I had to describe one word, is electricity. It is electricity that has lasted. So I had a group that went in February of 2023. They're still running on that electricity, and I see it in their classroom. And so July, I don't think, I mean, I know, I don't want to go to Vegas in July because of the heat. Like, who wants to do that? But like Autry said, it's the closest one. I can send a larger group because it's in summer and people are available. After July, it would be, I'd have, I believe, yeah, 28 staff members trained, and then I would just have a few more left to go if within the following, this same year. We have CSI funds because we are a low-performing school, as you know. And the impact it's doing on my teachers and instruction, along with Unbound Ed and Gleam, together is really making a difference in our classrooms. And to be able to do that, and I know, you know, I don't want to have CSI funds forever because that means we're low-performing. So my goal is to not one day have those funds because, you know, that means we're not low-performing anymore. So, but this is, and I'll let Ms. Franco speak in a minute, what it meant to her. I can share a video view with you that teachers, one of the things we do, if they do go, any PD, they have to do a presentation to the whole staff. And in just that presentation that they did, it's like that electricity transferred over to my other staff members who had not gone and just motivated them in a way that was, it's just been so impactful and so transforming. And to be able to have this opportunity that we have now because of the funds we have right now is, is, I can't even, like, I can't explain. So I'm going to have her explain her experience again.
Didn't plan on speaking about it, but I am here, and I want to say something about it because it was that powerful. The way it works, this conference is set up, is you choose which sessions you go to. And when I tell you I chose right in every single session I went to, I'm not exaggerating. I left feeling so inspired. I left feeling so motivated to go back in the classroom immediately and build relationship with my students, something that I always, you know, put at the forefront. But like she's explaining, it's that electricity, that energy that I came back with. I think that's unmatched. I want, I wanted to fill, I wanted to, how should I explain this? I wanted to, like, put it in a bottle and bring it back and just give it to everyone because the way I felt after going, it truly was inspiring and super meaningful. So very important to me, as well as Unbound Ed, as you can see, because I'm speaking on both.
Extinction, Unbound Ed is more about the academic strategies. And the Innovatives, Innovative School Summit is, like Charlie mentioned, is really about the culture and climate in which that teaching and learning is happening.
Thank you for sharing.
Any public comments? I heard moved by Vice President Pizzotti, second by Priscilla Vanegas. All in favor?
Aye.
I too say aye. All right. Now to four.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Final action item before, sorry. Approval of the out-of-state conference Broadway Teachers Workshop, July 15th through 18th, 2024 in New York, New York City, New York.
Yes, and so this professional learning investment is for one teacher who will travel to New York for a Broadway Teachers Workshop. And I'll keep it very brief. The fiscal impact is $3,500, and that also will come from ESR fund. So that they can use CTE funds for other.
Different fund.
Oh, it's a different ESR fund?
Yeah.
No, this is not ESR, it's CTE.
No, it's from. This is budgeted elementary and secondary school emerges. No, that's why I asked, is it, it's a different, it's a different ESR funds. That's why she was saying that there's different pools.
I'm sorry, I'm tired.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm trying to help.
It's okay, it's light.
Yeah. And Mr. Hanks gives all of his summer to our kids, and every after-school to all of our kids, and everything.
I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure we have the enough money. Second.
I heard moved by Vanegas, second by Pizzotti, all in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And that is it for me.
No board governance? Any boards, okay, we're going to do board superintendent comments? Dr. H?
I just appreciate all the engagement from staff, and that's what we're about, empowerment and advocacy, and people expressing their thoughts, whether it's here, in a survey, in an email. That is, that is what we're sharing our kids, what civic engagement looks like. So just thank you, and any comments that I was going to share, I will save them for a future time.
All right, trustee Vanegas.
Yeah, thank you to everybody still here. Rest is part of wellness. So I'm going to end it there.
Trustee Wong?
I'm going to forego because we have to go back into closed session.
Right.
Everybody's foregoing, foregoing. Okay, we're going to go back into closed session. Do I do that after I say all this other stuff? Okay. We're going to do future board agenda items.
No, we'll just go into closed session.
Okay. All right, going to a closed session, and we shall reconvene later. Okay, that's good.